Presentation, discussion on the Pinal County Strategic Plan. And Leo, and you think this is going to be pretty long and in-depth. So this is one of those situations where instead of being recognized by the board, if you guys have anything, without being too out of control, just insert yourself and have a free discussion. So, go ahead Leo.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do think this is going to be a long one. And if you remember, when we initiated this process back in the past, and Natasha, do I have a ability to change it from here myself? No, I don't, okay. I guess if you don't mind, I can ask for slide movement. I'm going to sit because we're going to be here for a while. If you remember, when we did this back now, it was May-June of '21. When we did our first one, when, you know, you were seated in January, we got to, we got a strategic facilitator at the time, it was Patrick Abara. And we took about four hours, two different sit-downs up here in the ceremonial courtroom. We had all the directors, and we went through, and as a part of that, we took some time to update you on where we're at, and what was going on so that we could foster the discussion about where you want us to go from here. And so today's is going to be similar, in the sense of, we're going to be taking some time to see where we've come from, from the last year and a half. Typically, we'd like to do these every year. Over the summer, as you know, we've had quite large events, whether it was business projects or the elections going on, that we paused to do this until the new year, which I think is probably a good time, in January, as we reflect on the year past and look toward the future. So, we're going to take a lot of the material that we had, that we developed back then, we're not going to recreate the wheel, but we surely want to discuss if there are any changes in guidance moving forward, specifically on some of the major initiatives that are going on. We came up with five strategic priorities, and those priorities, just as we start to talk about them, are not mutually exclusive. They're all interdependent on one another, and they affect one another and support one another. So, just wanted to make sure to keep that in mind, and I'll comment on that as we go through. So this first slide here is really the culture of our organization, and we wanted to set that up prior to going into the priorities. Our mission here is to protect and enhance the citizens' quality of life by driving vitality and providing efficient, effective, needed services through talented and motivated employees. And you'll see that through our priorities as well. Our vision is that we lead through innovation, flexibility, and collaboration, which result in vibrant, safe, and well-developed communities. One other thing I'd like to mention here is the priorities, and for the public to understand, these are the board priorities that we're getting into. The county is larger, in the sense of the other constitutional offices, but we're not strategic planning for the sheriff's office, or the county attorney's office, or the treasurer's office. They all have their own, and they have their own functions. So this is really around the realm of the board's responsibilities, as well as, of course, we support all of those offices. So, back when we were working on our culture, our employees co-created what our values would be as we go forward, and it nicely fit into the acronym ACT. But comes with accountability, taking responsibility for our actions, commitment, all-in, going above and beyond expectations, and teamwork, coordinated group working together toward a common goal beyond our own personal ambitions. And hopefully, you'll see some of those values come through as we talk about our priorities and what we've been able to accomplish. And so, as we do, I want to take the moment to thank you for your leadership, because really, that's what's guided all of us over the past year and a half. And thank you to all the staff. We've made a lot of good progress, and the quality of staff and leadership that we have here in the county is why that's happened, and why it will continue in the future. Next slide, please. So this is our first strategic priority, and they're not in any order for any particular reason, but it's just how we're laying it out. So, financial strength and stewardship. We believe we maintain a long-term positive financial position by balancing revenues and expenditures for operations, AKA a structural balanced budget. Debt management and capital investments. We steward the taxpayers' funds efficiently and effectively to minimize the burden on taxpayers and create a competitive community and business environment. We'll get into more of those details here. Next slide, please. I wanted to talk first about a credit rating, because that represents what the investment community and how the financial analysts would look at where we're at, strength-wise, financially, as a county. And I want to go back a little bit to the history, and maybe part of the reason I do that is because that's when I first got here, back in 2009. Our rating was an A-, and today, well, back in June of '21, is AA for Fitch and AA- for S&amp;P, the two raters that we typically get when we issue bonds. And today, those ratings still exist. Part of the reason I wanted to show that was to show how they can change over the years, but how they can also take a lot of time to change over years. People don't typically just change ratings, you know, flippantly or back and forth. They tend to be stable and change when needed. So, a couple of questions that have come up in the past, when we've talked about debt issuances, are how, what affects these ratings? How can we approve them, or how might they be effective negatively? And so I wanted to take two of the comments out of our recent rating reports to help you understand that. So S&amp;P is a lower rating at an A-, and they say, "In our view, the county's general credit-worthiness is somewhat constrained by its local economic metrics. More specifically, our calculation of market value per capita." That's an important one, and it's something that you all have seen over the years, when we do our tax levy report, and we do all the benchmarking around. If you remember, when we look at the value per capita of our properties, it's always at the very bottom. So we're at the bottom, sometimes at the very bottom, sometimes bottom two, bottom three, of every county in the state. Which is also why, and what we'll talk about here in a little bit, that our property tax rate is on the higher side, because our values are so low that we have to have a little bit of a higher rate in order to levy an equivalent amount. And we'll get into that here on the next slide, but wanted to make that point. And then also, the projected capita EBIs, which is really, for lack of a better word, discretionary income related to the national levels. And you've seen that also in our presentations, where you've seen we've been on the bottom half of the per capita income in the state as a county, at the very bottom, matter of fact. And so, what's that saying is, we have a lot of people here, and they have a lot of properties, but the values and the incomes related are on the lower side. Some of the reason for that, as you know, is, and that we work on through here, and that we've just talked about, is because we have a lot of residential and not a lot of industrial base. So, like, if you look at a Chandler, totally different situation, because they've got a mix and a balance of those two, and Maricopa County as a whole. So that's a lot of the reason, as I was saying, these are interdependent and affect each other, really do cross over, and is why a lot of these priorities came to be, and a lot of movements that we've done over time have come to be. So, as they mentioned, that they could raise the ratings if the county's tax base continues to grow, and further strengthening incomes and population indicators. And then Fitch, on the positive side, the other question that gets asked sometimes is, "Well, if we issue this particular debt, it increases our outstanding debt in total. Is this going to hurt our credit rating?" So, what they've said is, "The county's long-term liability burden is a low 4.4% of personal income. So they expect our long-term liability to remain consistent with a AAA assessment." So as they're going through all these different categories, they're rating each individually first, and then they have an average. So that actually has a AAA assessment. AAA is the highest, and you'll see in the next slide, but AAA is where we want to go. So, as far as our debt to our income and population, we're at a very good place, and they see it growing appropriately and consistently with each other as they all grow. So, next slide, please. So, just for the, so you and the public can see, this is the chart that we rate on. And so, us being in AA and AA-, is considered a very high credit quality with very low credit risk. So we're almost up to the very highest tier that we could be at. As I mentioned before, Chandler, that city is rated as AAA, Scottsdale is rated as AAA. We're obviously not speculative grade, we're not a risky investment, we're not a junk investment. Where we started out at A-, in 2009, as I said, we were still high-quality credit, but at the lower end of that, really borderline moderate risk. So now, we're at a very stable, very low-risk situation, a very good, solid credit rating. But we would always look to improve. So as we go into the future, from that aspect, one of our goals for the long-term is to increase these, at least take a step up, and try to get to a AA for S&amp;P, and an AA+ for Fitch. Let me take a moment to stop there. Are there any questions related to our rating, and where we're at, what we've been doing there?
Mr. Chairman, I don't really have a question, but I remember back in the day, like in '13 and '14, we were trying to get some, our credit, get a, do an analysis on it and where we stood. I didn't think we would be very credit-worthy. They gave us a pretty good credit rating at the time, and I asked Mr. Lou at that time, "Why would they do that?" And the answer is, because governance will raise the tax rate to pay the bill. They don't see the down risk. It's not like a business, because they just see that the governments will cover their debt with a higher tax if they have to. And so, to that point, though, we've done a really good job of maintaining a real steady tax rate, even declining at some point. And we're able to decline it, because we have seen some increase in valuation, so... But I always thought it was interesting that they don't look at it like a bank, like a business, because they go, "Well, you just, all you have to do is raise your tax rate, and you'll be fine." And that's really how these bonding companies, I think, do their analysis of government. So, and I, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Leo, but I kind of remember those conversations.
Yeah, thank you. I'll add a little more color to it. To your point, I remember those days, well, the issues that we were going through at the time was, we were burning through our cash reserve. We probably had, we got down to 12%, and we had a negative, we had a deficit, we had an income statement that was going backwards. And so, and it was on the heels of the Great Recession. Housing values and commercial values, we're still trying to catch up on the rolls. And so, to your point, what, a couple of things we were able to do. One was, in the past, in '10 and '11, which you'll see in a future slide, the county was taxing its maximum property tax rate by law that it could tax. And it was continuing to do that, that had been the history of the county. The law says that you can tax 2% over your prior year's max value, because it gives you some inflationary amount, plus new construction. And the county historically did that all the time. When we got into this, we realized that we had a very uncompetitive tax rate, and that was actually holding us back from business development, which would then help us to reduce taxes in the future. And so there was a concerted effort to decrease that rate, and to try to get that rate more toward the middle. And so, to your point, we stopped taxing the max. I think now, we're at about 60% of the max. So the point that you're making about the way investors look at it, is they say, "Well, if the political body had to," they understand the political realities, "but if they had to, they have capacity to pay their debt bills if they needed to." And so the risk of default is a lot lower. But at that time, what we all went through, you remember, probably in much detail, we scrutinized and we analyzed every contract, every one of our departments and how we were operating, and made decisions to contract out things that were more, were cheaper and more efficient and effective, or cut contracts and do stuff in-house. ICE contract was a big element of that at the time. So they knew and saw that we had a management plan, in order to balance our budget, and to get on, and we did so without raising taxes. As taxes were decreasing, we were able to do that. And so they went with that plan, and they do surveillance, so they look at us every couple of years, even if we're not doing a bond issuance. And they saw that we were able to execute that. So they have confidence in the county's ability through management and through legal abilities related to taxes, that we're not at high risk at all for a default. Any other comments or questions on that? I think that's a good segue into the next slide. Which will go back into that, and thanks, because that comment did help set this up. I did want to talk about where we were at in '10-'11. You mentioned '13-'14, but '10-'11 is where, when I got here, and '10-'11 was where a lot of these kind of goals and strategies started to change, again, from taxing the max. And very much the reason why being, one of the questions we asked was, not only do we have a high tax rate compared to the other counties, and non-competitive in the business environment, but, as we mentioned earlier, what is the amount of wealth that the county community has to pay these taxes and to support this function? So one of the metrics we looked at was, how much is our primary property tax levy as a percentage of the county's personal income? And so back in '10-'11, it was 1.16%, which was the second highest in the state. We have 15 counties, so it was the second highest out of the 15. So, again, we wanted to reduce that levy per capita, and we wanted to reduce that rate. And so today, the most recent information we have, we're the 10th highest out of 15. So we're actually lower than the median when it comes to this, which is great, and we've reduced that to 0.71%. And so, part of the history that I was trying to get to is, if you looked at, if you owned property in '10-'11, and up until today, you experienced whatever changes in valuation that occurred over those years, because if you know, the property tax levy is just the valuation of your property, taxable valuation, multiplied by whatever the tax rate is. So very simple. Value times the rate gives you the levy, what you're going to pay on your bill. So if you were to look at that formula over the last 12 years, and this is an aggregate on average, and you take out all of the new construction that got added, you own that same property, the Pinal County portion would be 15% less, on average, of a levy today than it was back in '10-'11, in real dollars, not inflation-adjusted. So if you put that, even an average of 2%, which we know recently inflation's been different, but if you averaged 2% over that time, not even compounding on each other over 10 years, you would expect to see a 20% increase, just for inflation. And it's decreased 15%. And that's important, because a lot of work we've done, but I think it's also important as we start to frame the conversation around, since now we're at this place, how, what kind of guiding principles do we want to use going forward? Which was, came up the last time we did the adoption of the budget. So I want to, which is a great segue into the next bullet on here, which is about that philosophy. But before I move on to that, is there any questions on that part, history of the rate, and where we've been? Okay, so great, so that sets us up really nicely, and to help everybody understand, we have this truth in taxation notice that we do, that's a part of the state statute. We publish it in the papers, we have a public hearing, we have a vote. What the truth in taxation notice does, is it says, "If there are any increases to the actual levy on existing properties, you have to notify the public that there's a tax increase." Even though your rate may go down, that levy may go up, because your values went up. And so you can reduce the tax rate, and still increase the levy, and still do a truth in taxation notice, which is what actually did occur in this previous year, when we did this. And I remember current chairman certainly bringing up some of those questions when that happened. I can't remember the exact percentage, I think it might have been, you know, 0.03%. It was pretty low, because we only went 2 cents over the truth in taxation rate. But the reason I bring this up is, it can happen the other way, and it's happened the other way, where the values go down significantly, and if you wanted to levy that same amount as you did last year on that existing property, you'd have to increase your rate. And there were times that the county did that, just prior to '10-'11 for that year. They did that. It went up, I think, from 330-something, 340-something to 399. So just before we started that strategy, that's exactly what happened. And so, I don't, this is just one mechanism and one way that it can go, but I want to understand how both of those things offset each other. In contrast, if you were just to keep the tax rate the same all the time, then your levy would literally change in proportion to your value change, up or down. But if your values went up, you kept a flat rate, of course, you'd have to do, you'd have to do a truth in taxation, because you'd be levying more on existing property. So one other concept to consider is a levy that does have some relationship of inflation in there. Because like I said, if you were just to keep a flat levy on existing properties every year, then you would never be keeping up with inflation. Granted, I understand, and I understand perception of the public of, "Hey, you guys, you've got to trim the fat, you guys got to get lean, you got to be efficient, and you got to maximize the use of our taxpayer dollars." And like I said, we went through significant efforts to do a lot of that. I'll never say that we're perfect, I'll never say there's not any waste, because there always will be, in every, in all the top companies in the world, top governments in the world, there'll be some level of, because none of us are perfect. But we want to get there as close as we can. Theoretically, if we were, you know, ever at that place, you would want some levy for adjustment for inflation. Otherwise, we, as an organization, would be falling behind in meeting the demands. But of course, that goes with what are the expectations of the community, and what are they willing to pay for those expectations? And so, if you were perfect or close to it, and you didn't adjust for inflation, then you would say, "Okay, well, where do we want to reduce whatever level of service that might be, and where is that acceptable to the public for what they're paying for?" And then, which I've kind of already talked about, it is the hybrid and needs-adjusted, and it's really a hybrid of all of these, in a sense, where the public is telling us what their expectation is. The organization is saying, "These are the levels of service that we can provide with this amount of money." So where is that balance and that sweet spot of what the community's expectations are today, what resources are available, and what the organization is able to produce? And I think we, as you've been through, we go through that exercise, we see what the departments are asking for, what they're requesting, why they need it, how that would affect the tax rate, how it would affect their reserve. So we go through that during the budget process. And so I just wanted to bring it out there, and hopefully, you can understand the framework, and the differences, and the nuances, and get some guidance as to how you want us to move forward. Do you want us to be in a kind of tax reduction, levy reduction mode, like we were in the past? Do you want us to try to kind of more keep up with inflation? What's your gauge on what the community expectations are and where we're at, as we are a growing county, and we're growing fast? And so what type of approach, principles underlying, do you want us to, direction do you want us to go?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I think he's asking questions there, so let's all weigh in.
I mean, I, so this last year, our TNT, it seems like it was 13 cents, is that right, Ms. Woods? And we dropped our rate 11 cents, and that brought us down to where we maintained our general fund balance, and we're pretty much, I mean, it was only like $100 and something thousand dollars that we were over the previous year. And that was a pretty substantial cut. I mean, that seems to be pretty good. As we were going through, and we're looking at different departments, and we're looking at what they need, not what they want, but what they need, and how they can operate efficiently. Sorry, guys, if you're out there. We need to know what it costs to operate, the services that we provide. And I think in some ways in the past, that that wasn't necessarily met, but I think we're getting closer to that at this point. And so I would be willing to say, you know, "Okay, we know what it costs, we know what it's going to cost this next year," and to stay in the same direction that we're in would be my personal preference.
I want to have the ability, like I brought up months ago, that we do have more control. When things are going great, we need to be able to lower the rates as much as possible, rather than just keep piling it on if we don't, you know, we shouldn't operate to make tons of money, you know, tax money, that, to be able to return it and keep the citizens with that money. And as it was set up before, I mean, we didn't really have that ability, because it's such a lag time, so anything we can do to make it more, so that we can adapt quicker, would be useful for us.
Okay. So I'm hearing, yeah, it's sort of a hybrid, in the sense of, what are the needs in order to provide these services, but keeping in mind, we want to lower the rate. We want to continue to lower the rate.
If possible, yeah.
Mr. Chair, and we need to be mindful of what the constituency wants in the way of services. And I know there's a lot of talk about people, you know, as new people move in, "We want all these services, nobody wants to pay for them." I get that, you know, because I'm one of those people. I want all the services, but I don't want, I mean, my tax rate preference would be zero, right? But that doesn't work. So, we have to maintain some level of taxation in order to provide services, and as the county grows larger, there's going to be an expectation of more services needing to be provided. So we have to temper that with the cost and what it costs our constituency.
Yeah, and that is the goal, as we have moved on, and as some things have come up, and as you've heard before, and since you've been in, all have been in government in one way, shape, or form for a while now, that the businesses will tend to be net contributors to the government, and residents as a whole will tend to be net consumers of the government. And you even see it in a way, you look at assessment ratios, you know, you get 10% caps, you know, versus 18 or what. So, part of, to your point, is to grow, and what the investors also recognize is to grow the economic base and diversity of the county, to where the residents can enjoy the amenities and the benefits, and the quality, and the services, without being overburdened. So that's a lot of the reason why we're trying to create a balance shift there, that you'll see in some of the later slides.
Mr. Chair, if I could interject on some thoughts here. You know, we do have various areas that are growing in population, and and because they've grown so rapidly over the years, and I'm talking about areas like Santan Valley, or even Gold Canyon, or other areas like that, where people are moving in these areas and expecting or thinking they've got certain services, fire protection's one of them. Let's just talk about some of these things, as we're discussing this. Parks, recreation, things of that nature, that some of the discussion right now, there's still some more work that we need to do in the public, because I've been pretty adamant about getting some skin in the game from the people that are in those geographical areas that want these type of amenities that we're talking about. And so we need to be able to have a discussion, and I think this is part of where we're at. What kind of services are we going to offer? Are we going to enhance some of the services? I think, I think I've heard Supervisor McClure say in some states that he's lived, or that he's been a part of, the counties offered community parks, like what we have up in one of our smaller communities that Supervisor Kavanaugh used to represent, and that we're taking care of the park, one of the parks. It's a small park, nonetheless, but we're, we do the maintenance and everything on that park. And so, there, we've got to look at it from that perspective. So are we looking to expand some of our services? And if we are, then that's going to be part of our budget that's going to be spent on that. Or do we do some kind of a hybrid of a public partnership, public-private partnership? And that's, we still have some planning to do there, in some of these areas, specifically in the Santan Valley area. And there needs to be a lot of discussion that with the citizens, to your point Supervisor McClure, is that we need to get a really good gauge of what our constituents are desiring, and what they want, but with that, they need to understand there's some taxation with this. I think all of us are here to try to be as conservative as we possibly can. I don't think there's any of us on this board that wants to be a government that is taxation, taxation, and doing that. And it's been evident, what we've accomplished and what we've been doing, not only the last two years that you three have been on the board, but years back from whenever Supervisor Miller first took board, and then whenever I came on in '17, we've continued that process of lowering the tax rate to meet those, because we've seen the values and everything else, and trying to, to where we're not spending money. So, you know, I guess what I'm saying is, is that there's still some more look-sees that we've got to look at, we've got to make sure that we're meeting with our constituents. We're going to be starting that here real quick, meeting with them as we start to approach the new budget, and so on and so forth. We've had some studies that we've done. Economic development is a big one right now, that we need to be looking at, and we just talked about, we just did a, we passed a, one of our, the item before this, to help enhance the economic development. We've got to look at some ways that we can help certain areas to increase their retail sales, and things of that nature. And that's an investment that's going to be required of us, if we're going to help these areas get started, but case in point. So, anyway, that's kind of... So, anyway, that's kind of my interjection on this.
Before we go to Steve Miller, talk about retail, there's some other factors here too, where people, everybody's trying to do something. The state legislature and the governor possibly going to do away with food taxes, which don't affect, doesn't affect the state, but it definitely affects the cities because a lot of the cities rely on that. And they're wondering, okay, is the state going to now take over and provide the services that the cities won't be able to do if they do take those retail taxes? Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm just going to, kind of high-level, try and remember a lot of the issues that we dealt with in the past. And I think if we looked at Pinal County even eight years ago and how much more industry has come to the county, that's a real bonus. And even, even the population with new houses and stuff, but a lot of this is a lag time before we get those taxes on the rolls. And I think that an average house takes 24 months before we actually see those revenues coming in. So that means if they started a house today, it's not going to be on the books until '25, I mean, and really start capturing those revenues. So we're playing catch-up constantly. That's really where I wanted to go with this. And the demand comes long before the dollars come. So that, trying to shrink that gap has been difficult at times. And this is a question that we don't have to answer right now, but I also would like to see the valuation and revenues that would come off of industry versus houses. And I think they can divide that out pretty easily. But those, I mean, I'm sure that the Nicola plant is not online yet. I mean, and what it'll be when it's completed and what designates it as complete. That's the same with Lucid or Kohler or any of them that have come to town. We kind of need to understand that gap to help us plan going forward. It's just something I thought about and I wanted to share that with you.
Mr. Chair, may I? Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
So, to that point, residential taxes versus commercial taxes, what is the sweet spot there for a good balance? I mean, is like 35% of commercial retail compared to, say, 65% residential or is there some, is there some ratio there?
It's been a while. I looked, and I look at Chandler's, and I can't remember off the top of my head, but I'll go back and look to your point. They have them by category, and so you can see what kind of class is and what the base class is. We were off, part of me is, you know, like a 60/40 is my memory, but I'll go back and look.
Put something in that range.
It's been a while, yeah, from a value perspective.
Thank you.
And so maybe we didn't, I didn't point it out because I glossed over it, but we did start at $399 and we...
Leo, I'm sorry, you can't see me, I'm going to ask a question here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, in this, in this proposed plan, do we have enough, do our rates allow for funds to improve roads and other infrastructure without relying on other government agencies or taxes to meet those improvements? We've seen the, you know, the proposal fail and the, and the promised funding get cut, but our needs to fill potholes and widen roads and improve, you know, water crossings are still there. So, how does, how does either keeping the rate or lowering it impact our ability to get those things done?
Yeah, so, this is general fund money. Mostly what goes to maintaining or creating new roads are special revenues through the Highway User Revenue Fund, HERF, people call, or our road excise tax, that's a half cent on the sales tax. So HERF is the gas tax that gets allocated through the state and federally. And then our road excise tax is a countywide half cent. And we are going, there's a whole slide on that. And good question because that's probably going to be the most important thing that we talk about today. It just is in the infrastructure and management asset priority category and isn't in this one yet. So what I would say to that specifically from the general fund perspective, we can use general fund money for transportation infrastructure if we chose to. Typically, we're using dedicated revenue sources for those and they're supposed to be correlated to the uses on the road. That's why it's the gas tax. We all know that HERF has not been adjusted for inflation in, I don't know how many years, Andy, I'm sure knows off the top of his head, but probably at least 30 or 40, 91?
90.
91 was the last time. So, 19 and 22, so 41 years. So, that is, and then you have a changing industry, you know, going to electric vehicles. And so I think the question of how to fund and maintain our transportation infrastructure is a very important one and it's in a future slide. This one doesn't really affect that, but it potentially could if that was a mechanism that the board wanted to go in that direction and to start using general fund money to significantly fund transportation infrastructure. It's legally allowable.
That would require raising the tax rate a bit though. I see ya, hello. So, but that would require, but the general operations and then to add that would be an increase in taxes.
It would.
But to a greater end, I mean.
Yeah, it's a significant portion. Roads take a long time to build, a long time to plan, and they're very expensive. It's just the reality.
So just bulldoze a dirt road and drive it?
Yeah. We all start riding around in our ATVs.
That might upset air quality though. I think there's some issue with that, you know.
So, so we have reduced the rate from $399 to $356, at least in the time I've been here, and you and previous boards have all been a part of that. So there has been a significant decrease. As we talk about the general fund stability reserve, if we transition into that, as we mentioned earlier, there was a point where we're at 12%. I think right now, our goal, our previous goal was 15%. I'd probably be a little bit more comfortable with 20 just because we know that we're heading into a recession and we've got, we've got a lot of different things are going on with inflation even on the expense side. But we have been quite a bit higher in the past few years, as you could see, 30, 36, looking at 29. But, but take that with, we identify what we consider to be one-time revenues or excess revenues, and we do apply those to the capital projects, a lot of them that you'll see in the future slides. But we would rather do that than issue debt to build these projects. As you know, two of the bigger ones we've got going on right now is a new election facility and to replace the Assessor Recorder Treasurer building over here too. And so those are significant expenses that we like to put aside as much as we can, excess revenues and one-time revenues, so that we don't have to bond and so that we don't get out of a structural balance. So it just looked like heads were nodding on the 20% versus the 15. It tends to be one where there are times where you're going to need to dip into it and that's why you have it. But then you try to get back where you dipped from so that you can dip again when you need to in the future. So it's a, just a cycle that you go through, similar to the economic cycles.
Mr. Chair, it seems that we said, or we tried to be 20% last year and even the previous year, we tried to maintain 20, so as not to fall into the recession issue where half the staffing was dismissed because we couldn't afford it and to be able to cover the lean times.
It helps to keep your service levels up and buy you time during the recessions. Okay, any other comments before we move on? Thank you. Okay, so nice segue into transportation and infrastructure and asset management. We provide safe, efficient, sustainable, cost-effective, and well-maintained infrastructure and transportation systems. We build, maintain, and manage capital assets to preserve long-term investment and ensure reliable services. So this covers a pretty wide breadth of assets that the county is, owns and is involved with. But most importantly, in what was just brought up, let's talk about transportation. And I'll just first set it up by giving some highlights so that there's some context and what we've been able to accomplish here, some things here in the past. But we do, we do pavement preservation on about, and as you see last year, 169 miles and this year it will do 195 miles. So that's a lot of roads. And again, those aren't cheap. One of the things that we've examined as we're looking into the best practices is something that we, kind of a layman's term called road recycling, but it essentially takes the materials that are there already in the ground, and if you need to mix some in, materials that we have at our yards. Or if it's busted up, old, broken asphalt that's already there and it's been there for a long time, a much more effective, cost-effective way to do that is to, in one sense, you kind of mill that up, you mill that up, but you keep it there and you put in whatever, whether it's oil or a lignin-based solution, and you can literally take what's existing, recycle it, and make it an eight-inch or a 10-inch base, and then put a real thin layer over the top. And you're not looking at cracks and you're not looking at potholes for years and years and years. Some of those roads, you look back 20 years, there's nothing on them. So they're going to save us a lot of money going forward related to maintenance and new construction on roads. So that's just something I wanted to let you know, as we're getting into it, we've been researching it, we're pretty close to making steps, there's different kinds of ways you can go about it. We'll do a whole in-depth work session on it and show you exactly what's going on, but I think that's worth mentioning. It will literally save millions and millions of dollars in the future. And it also is more sustainable for the environment as well. And then another thing that we're doing is a railroad crossing study countywide. Some of you know when this is a headache, it's a big headache, getting UP to give up any of these. And so we're trying to, when these happen, they usually like to trade them off. So if we're going to need one, we want to give up one that's not being used. And so we're doing a county-wide study to see where we can do that. So when we need them, we'll be able to switch those out timely, relatively timely. And then I'll just go over some of the state allocations and federal grants that we have gotten. Unfortunately, we didn't get that federal allocation on the I-10, but the state was willing for their side of that match, which was a big deal. We'll see how that develops in the future. We do have 20 million already that had been allocated to the North-South tier studies thanks to our representatives there. And of course, there's a lot more work to be done and more money going after that for this session.
Leo.
Yes.
So, you know, just so the public knows, you know, you're talking about the federal money, correct, on the I-10?
Yeah.
That was federal money. What happened there?
We didn't get it.
Where was our state, where was our federal representatives in that?
Well, Supervisor Miller probably could talk a little bit better on the inside baseball on that, if you don't mind.
Well, just, Mr. Chair, it just came down to priorities and this current administration does, saw, I think they wanted to do more, smaller allocations than one big one. And it, the criteria of multimodal aspect to widening I-10 is just not something that's feasible and, but that was not conveyed to either the people that select this, these types of projects and grant these, the grants, for whatever reason. And it's, we just fell, we just fell short. And, you know, and there was a cut, there was another project there on I-10, the Quartzon Interchange, that ranked very, very high, but didn't get, you know, they selected five and we were number six. And I don't know, we're putting back in for that one. I can't remember the exact criteria that Larry Rains told me that they were short on, on that one, but, oh, I know, well, the reason they didn't want to give us that one is because they thought we were going to get the widening I-10 and they didn't want all these projects to be in Pinal County. So, so we didn't get either one of them, which was kind of sad. But, folks, I, you know, I've said it, I've said it for years and I'll continue to say it, I-10 will not be widened until somebody in Washington DC decides to widen it. And it, it just doesn't, it just doesn't rank high enough. Goes back to, I think, the political power that, that our delegation really has and falls down pretty low. And it's unfortunate, but we just haven't been able to rise to that occasion to get that type of work done. And, you know, the sad part about transportation, and I'll just say this for, in general, it never rises to the need until there's enough fatalities. We base our, we base so much of our transportation systems on fatalities. And that's, it's not pretty and it's not, it doesn't seem like an acceptable way to do it, but if you look back and see the projects that get done, those, that is typically a key factor in the decision to do a project. It is very expensive. Transportation is so expensive. I'm kind of on a soapbox here, but I've been dealing with it. I dealt with it clear back when I was on the city council, back in the day. I mean, it's, and it's never changed. 1991 was the last time the gas tax was adjusted in the state of Arizona. And the revenues since then have been on the decline, not just because of electric cars, but because of the cafeteria requirements on auto manufacturers to get better gas mileage, get a gas, we drive more lane miles now than ever and we use less gasoline. And so to base the revenue off of gasoline sales is not good. And then, and then in the last four or five years, certainly the electric, electric car industry has really put some, some more pressure on that. So it's going to take some strong political capital to change that, that mode. And these are, you know, these are the things that I would hope that CSA and possibly, you know, more statewide organizations, League of Cities, that we send resolutions or we send letters to our Arizona delegation and ask for more help in these types of needs. So, I'm, sorry I digress a little bit, but that's kind of, that's really kind of the scenario where we're at. And if we can help, if anybody knows how we can help or something we can do, I'm all ears.
Yeah, to that point. Anyone else just weigh in at will if you want on a discussion like this?
Well, and I think that was more why I wanted to, information needs to get more out to the public. You know, we're so quick to praise certain projects when they do stuff, but we, you know, we need to send a message out there that, we got turned down on two major projects here in Arizona that ranked very high and we lost federal dollars to be able to accomplish that. And so I think that's a message that needs to be sent loud and clear, not only to, but to our federal representatives, all of them.
Yeah, the whole delegation.
We, you know, transportation should be one of the top things to the, your point, to avoid some of these fatalities that are out there. That should never be a reason for getting the job done. More lives being lost, just doesn't make sense.
Can I add one other thought? And it's because of the, you know, we've done a great job of attracting industry, but the industry's looking at us now. I mean, I can tell you, Lucid Motors never expected to have to add two hours to a supply chain because they have to get certain products delivered into the Phoenix area. They send trucks up and they send, and then they bring that product on down to Casa Grande. I mean, when you really start adding two hours to probably a dozen vehicles a day, drivers and everything, those are real dollars that are costing them now to get those products down. You know, they're looking at, instead of a two-hour turnaround time, they're looking at a four-hour turnaround. And if you're in business and you understand those costs and how they affect the bottom line at the end of the day, those are difficult. And, and so that, go back to, we kind of somewhat promised these industries that, oh, don't worry, we're going to handle this transportation problem, and we are not handling it very well. And that, that makes James Smith's job harder, I can tell you, because that circle is pretty small and they will talk.
Yep. That's a great point, and they will. And when they're, when they're flying stuff into Tempe and they're going from Tempe to Casa Grande and there's that kind of traffic on that 10, especially if there's an accident, it's a problem, yeah. And to that point, and that's why I think we see these this way, these are, these are community investments. They literally are. And they're investments not only in the quality of life for time on the road for all of us and our vehicles, but they're, they're investments because others will come and invest because of them. And they'll literally pay themselves back in the future. And so I think, I think transportation, when it comes to transportation and when it comes to taxes, it's a slightly different conversation. A service, yes, you're going to need and in a way, they're going to pay you back either way, but this is an investment and an asset that will literally pay you back over the years and, and more. But this is an investment and an asset that will literally pay you back over the years, and, and, and more.
Can, to, just to help Supervisor Kavanaugh a little bit, I do want to let you know that there is a bill that has been dropped at the House through the Rural Transportation Advocacy Group that outlines rural counties and going after some projects. And we're asking the state to give it to us through their general fund, to help kind of soften that blow. And we'll, we'll see if we can't get some more discussion, that's not agendized right now, but I would like to be able to, to give you guys some updates on some of that stuff going forward.
Well, my question is, are we opposed to using some general funds, not to build roads, huge project, but to fill potholes, to stop the erosion in the streets of San Manuel and Dudleyville and, and the places where, that are unincorporated, where they really need it? And, and our, our Public Works Department is struggling to bring a truck up to fill a pothole. I mean, is that, is it out of the question that we shouldn't, we should consider whether or not going, you know, we need to reduce the rate or keep the rate, tax rate where it's at, and earmark some of those funds to fix the roads in the rural part of Santan where there's no HOA? That's the question.
And that's, that's a policy decision, and that is kind of what this strategic plan is about?
Right.
And is that, is that something that we want to make sure is included in this upcoming budget season? You know, that we look at that and find that as one of the things we want to see done?
To that point, so every penny of property tax is worth, what, 1.2 million, 1.3 million?
I think it's 250 grand, maybe 280 or so.
Oh, I'm way off, okay, so...
Yeah, 10 cents is more.
Okay.
Five and 10 cent increments, so 5 cents is more like a million something.
Okay.
Yeah, so every cent is probably, I don't know, probably 280,000 these days.
It's not a whole lot. It's hard to fill the bucket.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, and that's why they have debt, I mean, there's dedicated sources for reasons, but those dedicated sources just haven't kept up, and as you've mentioned before, the dynamics of them.
The five of us might be out there filling in those potholes then with some shovels, okay. All five willing to do that, right?
I went to, I went to school long enough, so I didn't have to dig ditches.
Oh, okay.
See that? So, and back to the, we can have, we can have some items on, you know, the federal legislative updates and supports from Steve Block and, and C.S.A. We probably ought to have him here on the same meeting, on the same agenda item, because there is some overlap over there, and get into those. And also, to your point, the R-TAC has, has been brought up before, just different priorities of the R-TAC, and potentially being able to help, I think, to help fix and finish that loop that Supervisor Chairman Sertie has been focused on for quite a while now, so I think it'd be helpful. We'll try to get those at the same time, coordinate, be kind of a legislative day.
That'd be a good deal. Cool.
So, there are other, and our state legislators have been dedicating important money to important projects, the 24. I did want to mention on, on the state Route 24, that we got allocated the 15 million toward it so far, which is great for right-of-way, but we also were able to successfully work with state land for them to package it in an auction. So, if somebody is to buy this auction, they're going to dedicate those right-of-ways to us. And those, and those right-of-ways are, you know, $20 million plus. And so, that's another reason why state land, and we all work so hard for projects to come in, because there's transportation benefits that get built into those processes.
So, Leo, if I might ask a question then, with LG purchasing that piece of property right there on Ironwood and the 24, is that portion of what they, what they bought, has that been allocated, is that in that scenario that you're talking about?
It's in a, it's in a future package. It wasn't in that package. That one did have right-of-ways that came with it, but the 24 and the Pinal Parkway, right-of-ways were not included in that. That was in another package, in a package that's currently sitting, ready to go if somebody wants to.
Okay, so for, so the future of that 15 million then, it's to purchase other right-of-ways, correct?
Right, and that could, we could use that on the 24 to take the right-of-way as we plan to go all the way up to the 60?
Yeah, to Peralta, somewhere around Peralta Trail. Okay, okay.
And then, of course, one of the higher, highest priorities for City Maricopa is the 347 widening, which there were state allocations to help move that along as well. And then, two of the important federal grants that we got that you'll see, and you were there at the, you know, groundbreaking for the inland port on Hauser and Hannah Road, and really, that made that Nicola project possible, and that whole site, as there are other roads that we're working with Coolidge on for Procter and Gamble, and for other projects that are currently looking at that site. And then Peralta Road, which many of you just drove down to the ribbon-cutting it to that park, $13 million to get that thing paved, and to get it paved all the way to the federal trailhead. So, nice access for a lot of healthy recreation that people like to do out there. And then, as I just mentioned, we, we do collaborate quite a bit. That, one of the themes that came out of our last strategy session is the amount of, and quite frankly, came up before, is we want to be regional leaders, and so, we want to collaborate with the cities and towns on everything when it comes to infrastructure, transportation, planning, flood control, all of those elements. And so, this is just a list of some of the collaborations, both on ways that we win projects and ways that we plan in the future, long-term planning, as we partner with MAG and others, do special area plans, and also kind of large regional areas for movement. Next slide. So, we're going to go through a few of these, and this is just to give you some pictures and to highlight some of the things we've been talking about. Sometimes people don't always understand when we talk about the SR24 extension, so that you see it there on the top from Ironwood all the way over to the 60. The green is the north-south corridor, the tier two side, after tier one, it moved it over farther east. And so, we're trying to do the Central Arizona Parkway, I guess we call it that, I refer to it as the Pinal Parkway, but whatever we end up calling it, it's that blue that turns into the purple that heads south, so that you've got avenues for folks that are currently living there to get to the 24. And then also, in the future, as all that gets built out, then, then they'll go over more to the, toward the north-south, further east. So, that's what that looks like.
So, real quick, just so, these are just, these aren't set in concrete. Yeah, yeah.
Right.
And, yeah, they're concept drawings more than anything right now.
Right, completely.
That's one thing, we put this out, and we, boy, you'd have thought, oh, hell broke loose, you know, everybody was calling, what are you doing, you know? And, but this is just to give everybody an idea that we, we see, we see with the potential growth that's going on, we're thinking ahead of the game here.
Right.
On all of this, especially, we're having to pivot, we've had to do an audible whenever the 4617 was turned down, or 469 is what was turned down. And so, we're, these are all parts of the audible that we've had to pull, and then moving the north-south all the way to the east, that cap Parkway is a result of that. Pulling an audible so that we can meet the demands, and recognizing that we don't want the same issues that we've got with Ironwood, for instance, and some of those other roads in some of these areas. We look at out there at Gold Canyon, and, and the problems that many of us that drive on Gold Canyon, the people that live out there with, whenever the Renaissance Fair or any of those things goes on. So, that, that's even more of a reason to get the 24 to get around the Renaissance Fair and help take some, ease some of the traffic off of the 60, and get it and divert it towards the 24, so... And this kind of information, you know, we, I wish we did a better job, and maybe that's, you know, I just, I need to do a better job getting that information out to our constituents, because, what, I've been in here for six years, and we still have confusion on some of the roads and infrastructure that we've built, and that we built already, and what's in the future. And so, but anyway, I just wanted to make sure that there's, that's just a conceptual.
Thank you for that point. Very illustrative, inerasable markers. It's, it's, it is just to illustrate a concept, and it takes a lot of right-of-way acquisition, design, environmentals. So, it takes a long time before these things even get, really get narrowed to what they're really going to be. But we did want to show the concept, and to your point, and I'll make this point now, and I know we're going to talk about it later, but people, communities that are making investments in, in their quality of life, to me, are going to be more apt, to your point. We've got to do a better job of educating at the county level and at the cities to, and getting the feedback from the communities to know which roads really make a difference to them to the point that they would say, I'll pay for that. Yes, that vote went down, I think partly because, you're looking at, look at that green line, nobody's over there. Who's going to say, oh, I want to pay for that, when they're saying, I got problems right here close to home that I want to be paid for? I don't see this on the list. So, if you're going to get a plan that the community wants, it has to be a community plan. It has to be a plan where those community members say, I'm willing to pay for this road, and I see this on the plan. So, so I'm good with that one, whether it's the bypass in Gold Canyon, whether it's the Parkway closer over here to these, you know, to the folks in Santan. So, and we'll have that discussion here, but a great, great point, and probably the most important one of today.
Okay, thank you.
Next slide, please, and maybe we'll flip through these a little bit. This is just a visual and some background on the build grant that we did get the federal funding for. And quite frankly, just also to help you and the public understand, we have been going for this grant for many, many years, and it wasn't until Nicola did make the public announcement that they were kind of going to come here, that we got that grant. So, they kind of go hand in hand, it's a, it's a funny way that it happens, but it's like, the feds aren't going to give you the grant till you got the project, but the project's not going to come unless you're going to build the roads. So, you kind of got to time it, and in this case, it worked out great, but they go together. And then your Meridian Road project, to get folks up to the 24, a partnership with Queen Creek. And so, we're just illustrating some of the things that really have a significant impact to people's lives that we're able to partner with our municipalities to, to accomplish. Trickle Road over there near Casa Grande, and this one does have ties to some of the projects that are going out there. As you can imagine, as you can see in these pictures, you know, there's a lot of dirt and just a lot of land, not a lot of developed roads, but that's exactly why folks want to go out there, because there's, there's land that's close enough to a workforce, but the infrastructure has to catch up to meet those needs. So, we partnered with Casa Grande there. Same thing with Thornton Road, and as you could see there, it's near the Lucid site, and to help, help get them down and all these other companies over here, get them down to the 8.
But, Mr. Lou, wouldn't that, you know, you're saying you have to, you can't get the project without the other project, the road project without the building project? And we're trying to plan ahead, and we're looking at these things, would, would it not be to our best interest and look at the comprehensive plan to lay out and say, okay, this is an area where it will be industrial, there's not going to be homes here, these are the roads that need to go in for an industrial area, you know, whether it's four lanes or six lanes, or whatever that has to be to handle the traffic? Wouldn't it be in our best interest to look back at the comp plan and say, okay, here's these areas, let's concentrate on these areas to bring industry in? And then, here's these areas where the homes are going to be, yes, but how do we handle the industry? Because then, you've got the roads going to some extent, and you can bring that project in, consequently, getting the federal funds from that industrial project, but you've already started the ball rolling down line.
To get it closer, yeah, right, to point to, as you're matching up the land use plan with the transportation plan, to get some of that infrastructure started in place, in order to be able to win those and get additional federal grants to finish them through. And Steve, or Mr. Miller is shaking his head, because that's exactly what they did at the Arizona Commerce Park. It's exactly how that got built out, with Walmart and Tractor Supply and everything over there. I, I think it is a good method, the funding, kind of the, you know, build it and they will come and put the money down first, is a good plan, if it's there. It's a little harder to convince, but, but I agree, I think it's the way to go.
Just to piggyback on that a little bit, it's, it's a strategy that you should be thinking about. I was always famous about, let's go put a sewer line out here, and they go, well, there's nobody out there, don't worry, just put the sewer line out there, because it's, when Mr. Developer or Mr. Industry shows up, you can say, the sewer line is right there. Well, when's it going to be? No, it's there now. If we do take that same approach with transportation, at least, let's, let's tie up and get the right-of-ways, and let's have a plan, and let's have design done, and let's have a lot of things. You might not want to go to the full step of building it, maybe if you have the dollars, but at least if you have all those other intermediate steps taken care of, and they come to town, we can say, we've got it, we've got the right-of-way, we've got the design, and this is what we, you know, project this will be for the future.
So, do design so you're shovel-ready?
So, you're shovel-ready.
Instead of waiting, instead of waiting for the process?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, if you don't...
I think that's, I mean, that, again, that's a policy and a strategy that I think that, you know, the Board of Supervisors needs to talk about, and see if that's something we put in our, put in our strategic plan.
We can look at the prime ones, and to your point, they, you either have to be ready, or you have to be able to tell them, here's the plan to get ready, and here's a timeline to have it ready, or you're off. So, yeah, one or the other's got to be there, and so, so having some right-of-ways is a big deal, because sometimes you don't know for sure if you're even going to get those.
I know it.
So, yeah, we can, we can, we can examine that, and we can give some priority places and give some looks to you of this is what we'd like to do in these particular areas and movement we'd like to make to be able to at least be close to being ready, and be able to prove that we could be ready if they choose so to be there. The Pinal Tech Park, also in the CG area, but a different part, but that's where Kohler landed, and other semiconductor manufacturing suppliers have landed. But we, same thing, partner with Casa Grande to get, get those roads ready so that they can construct and deliver. So, as I kept, been saying, and I think this is probably the most important slide, we've touched on some of it already, but I want to get into the details a little bit and get some of your thoughts and guidance on this. We do have a current half-cent road excise tax. It's, it's a half-cent on everything else that is taxed, a privileged tax, or sales tax, if you want to call it that, that currently exists. It's very similar to the half-cent that we have for the general fund, except there's one category. I think it's personal property rental that they're still able to tax that the general fund isn't. So, it's very close, and just looked at it, we get about, right now, we're probably getting about $30 million a year on it. It is divvied up throughout the county by population prorata. So, every city, town gets their share based on how much of the total population of the county there is. Unincorporated population, we get according to that amount. And it's used a lot for maintaining all of these roads, the potholes, the cracks, rehabilitations. Sometimes we'll throw in new constructions if they're a priority, but there's only a certain amount, amounts of money in there, so it's not like you're going to do something really big with it. And the cities depend on that quite a bit, and it's significant to them. It's going to end and expire, because you could, you can have it for 20 years. It's going to expire at end of calendar year '26. Back in '56, the county did this, and I was just talking to Greg Stanley at the ribbon-cutting at Peralta Park the other week, and he was, he was reminiscent about that, and remembering, and he goes, yeah, you know what, actually, we probably took about two to three years just to kind of gear up and educate for that. And so, we're, we're looking at that, and we're in that process now, and I want to talk about that some more on your, what your thoughts on the approach. But let me give you another, you know, another angle and another thing that affects that. Oh, the other part is that it has to be by statute voted in the November ballot of an election year.
And that started in 1985, did it not? So, this is, this would be the third iteration of that.
When the very first one did? Yeah, I, I...
So, it's not some new tax, I'm just trying to make sure that, it's not a new tax, it's not, this has been going for a long time.
Some people refer to it as renewal.
Yes.
And so, obviously, so we're looking at '24, '26. And the PRTA tax that just didn't pass on that vote has more flexibility as to when it could be. It could be called for a special election, it doesn't have to be on that. As you remember, the very first one we did, we did it as a special election. It was a mail-in vote, and it was, you know, an off-cycle, and it was all by itself, if I remember right. But that plan that was approved originally, and it was approved at 416 and 417 props, one was a plan, one was a tax, the plan was approved, the tax was voted yes, but then, you know, the court deemed it illegal. So, the vote went out again, and that expired. So, because that plan had no tax funding appropriated to it, that plan itself also expired. So, the plan expired after five years if it got no tax funding. So, that plan is gone. So, if we're going to go in the future, we're going to need to have both a plan through the PRT, both a plan and, and a tax that would support that plan, would have to be approved. So, a part of the conversation that's been occurring is, for the public on these, it's a little, it could be confusing to them as to, okay, well, there's this tax that we just voted down, we voted for it once, and then it had the court baggage, and then we voted it down, and then now you have this other one that's coming, and then maybe now you're going to have another retry at the PRTA, and it could get confusing, and even, even from a government standpoint, the towns and cities and us, we want to have a cohesive plan between both, to be able to say, look, for this half-cent road tax, that's every, that's this 20-year tax, this is what we do with that money, and this is what we would do with that if approved for a renewal. And if not, these are the things that we would not be able to do. things that we would not be able to do. Um, and then, for this other half-cent tax, or the PRT, which is mostly new stuff, if you saw the plan, mostly large, new regional things, or connectors throughout the county, this is what that would give us, and if we, if we don't have that, we literally, um, it, it's tough to do all of these things. We look for other fundings through the state and other ways, but, um, we, we don't, we don't have a, a mechanism to say we're gonna deliver this. And then so in order to kinda show, and to have a unified, um, plan for both, we wanted to develop them together, so that we have, hey, here's what we do with this half-cent, here's what we do with the other half-cent, and here's what you're getting for all of this, and here's what you wouldn't get if you don't vote for one or, or the other. But at least that way, we could be coordinated, and the public can understand, everybody's on the same page regionally about what our plans are for this money, and what the expectations are that this money's gonna produce. Um, and again, as I mentioned earlier, it would be, have to be something that the community is willing to pay for, that it matters to them enough that they want that. Um, and so I think that's gonna be a big education movement from all of the electeds, counties and cities and towns to be able to go there, to get feedback and to develop a plan that their communities really want. Um, and it'll be a long process, like I said, two, two to three years on the previous just half-cent. Now we're talking about, if you're combining two to make one unified plan, in total over 20 years, over a billion dollars, it's gonna take a while to develop all of that, and, and it's gonna take a lot of effort and engagement. And so, um, as we go into that, I guess the, the questions that, that I had from you on that is, your thoughts on a unified plan, your thoughts on, these gotta go to the ballot at some point, do you, you, do you do 'em together on the same ballot? If you do, kinda which one do you want us to aim for, knowing that 24 is right around the corner? Part of what I think the concern was, is you go out in 24 for the half-cent road tax, if it doesn't pass, you got another shot at it in 26. But, the other side is, you do, you, you do a quick job, um, and you don't do proper engagement, and you don't do proper planning, um, then you have a lesser product, and, and you probably have lesser support. The other element in question to that is, the executive director of, and I'll just be open about it, we've talked about it in some meetings, the executive director of the PRTA is, by statute, um, the central Arizona governments, if it's, unless voted otherwise. Are they in the best position to regionally coordinate, and regionally do a, a grassroots community effort? Or are the actual, kind of, uh, local governments that are running this, and feeling the pain and the complaints, and, and getting the tomatoes and the screaming at the transportation meetings in their areas, you know, they, they, they have a really good sense of what people need and what they want. And so is there another mechanism to lead the development and implementation of this plan that would be more effective? Um, and then lastly, I guess the, the other question is, the PRTA, the, one of the challenges that we've had with that is that, since the plan is voter-approved, if you're gonna make any adjustment to that plan, you're gonna go back to the voters. And, and that can bite you in two ways. If you have significant construction costs, inflation, that change over the years, and you can't fully, can't do one of the roads, you'd have to go back to the voters to say, hey, we can't do that particular road anymore, 'cause we ran out of money. Um, or, if you have significant priorities that enter into your communities, whether it's because of residential development or business project, um, you can't really address it through this PRT, 'cause you can't change, they have phases of the timings of the roads, and the certain roads, you can't change it unless you go back to the voters, so it, it's not very flexible. So, there's a one-cent cap on these road taxes. If you do a half-cent, and you did the PRTA, that's a full cent, that's all you can do, that's the max that you can do. Um, and so, one of the questions is, is there an openness from the board to seek legislative changes that would keep that one-cent cap, but would just say, hey, if you do, if you do a cent on the road tax, and you don't do the PRTA, you can do that, you can do that also. Um, we, we know we have a Transportation Advisory Committee, we call it the TAC, that comes up with the plan, there's flexibility when there's priorities, you can go back, it's a very rigorous process still, but you have abilities and flexibilities to, to partner and to change when needed. So, I'm sorry I threw a lot at you, um, but those are kinda questions that we're looking for guidance on as we try to go forward. This is a monumental movement, um, it's really bigger than the county's ever done from a transportation perspective, ever. Um, and so we wanna be successful, and we truly want it to be something that the communities want, if they want it. And if they don't, then that's good for us to know, too, and we'll, we'll back off, and, and we won't go down this road.
I'll, I'll be the first to go on record. Um, I, I like the idea of the sales tax, because it actually, you know, the general fund comes from us collecting property tax, but I think in the sales packs, tells, sales tax portion, it's even the traffic, no matter where it's coming from, is gonna be participating in building these roads, and the infrastructure that we have. I think that should be one of the items here. I do like the idea, the flexibility, not being so, I think that was part of the problem with the previous plan, was we didn't have the kinda flexibility, and make a pivot, for instance, them putting out the north-south, clear out six miles away from us, like you, to your point, way out in the middle of nowhere, and not having the flexibility to use those funds, for instance, on a parkway. If we had to make a pivot, this allows us to do that, to where the county can actually spend their portion at, at certain places. You've got your Highway 88 up there, if we wanted to participate in something like that, we can. So I think, I would like to see us have some flexibility in all of this. I do think we need to go back out, I think we need to do it. We're not gonna get there off of our general fund to be able to build the, and off of our, our current status with our, um, impact fees, 'cause that's another revenue that is actually generated to help pay for these roads and infrastructure. And so I think the ha, I think the, and, and I'm thinking, probably lumping them up together, like you're talking about, so that it doesn't create confusion. And I do like the collaboration, just like we've, and I think we've done a pretty good job collaborating with all the other municipalities, to come up with a plan that would be beneficial for every, all of us. And so, all, all the communities involved, and the unincorporated communities as well. So that's kinda going off of what your question is, that's where I'm leaning, that's where I'd like to see us go.
Um, of course, we are working with, with consultants as well, but what do you think about from a timing perspective? And, um, you know, we're looking at, a, a, and if we, are they gonna be on the same ballot, or should they be on separate ballots? And, and if so, and, you, kinda timing of all of this?
Yeah, and I, you know what, a consultant probably could help us with that, but, to your point, which you said, rather than being hasty about this, and making sure that we get the right education out there, and get the buy-in from the public as to what we're, what we're trying to accomplish here, I'm leaning towards 2026. I know we need to probably do something maybe sooner, but anyway, that's kinda where I'm at.
Well, I think that's gonna give you time to get the education out. Like you say, in the last, in the last election with the PRTA, I was talking with one of the cities, and they said, oh, yeah, you know, we're, we're for it. Well, there's opposition signs all around City Hall, it's like, well, why? Well, 'cause they're looking at it and saying, well, there's no money for this road, what the heck? We don't, we don't care about that. They don't understand that it's different buckets of money. So I think it's really important that we, and they said, well, you know, but the city councils all on board with this. I said, yeah, great, well, who else knows? Well, no, no, nobody. I said, okay, there's your problem, you know, you need to get out and go talk to people, tell them, here's how this works. And it's our job to go out and do that, I mean, our job, and the councils, and all those people. And that's, that's where we need to spend the time doing it. So, yeah, I'd say, if you did it in 26, and ran them, uh, together, you'd probably be okay, but you, but you have the lead time to do all the dog and pony shows, in the meantime, to educate the public.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, and develop that plan, get that feedback from them to develop a plan that actually, that they actually want. Um, it, it does, it takes time, takes a long time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The, the flexibility part really kinda, I think, is, may be the key to getting this thing past the, or accepted by the, the public. Because, man, we, these plans are just too, too intense, and they never, never, I mean, we can project whatever we think the cost is gonna be, and we never hit it. We're always way short, we're always constantly. I think, you know, I think in general, everybody knows that we need to put money towards transportation, uh, but I, this is just, I think people have, we have to have the flexibility to be able to spend it on what we have money to do. I mean, sometimes, sometimes the project is tied to what we have in the bank, to spend on it, you know? And we, we'll have to pick and choose, so, um, I, I, and I, I, I'd like to go big, and see if we couldn't change the state statute, and raise it to two cents, but make it, uh, you know, a city could say, oh, we'll just do a cent and a half, or we'll do three-quarters of a cent, or, you know, or, I mean, or a county. I think there needs to be more flexibility at the, at the leg, at the state level to allow these communities, 'cause they're not gonna fund these projects. We have, we have just come to a standstill in how we're gonna fund transportation projects in Arizona. And, um, and until we get to an impasse here, and, and I think there has to be a whole array of ideas and thoughts on how we're gonna fund it going forward. One person tells me, don't do it in a sales tax. Are you okay with a gasoline tax? Oh, yeah, I'm okay with that. Well, that's a sales tax in a sense, but we've seen how that model's not working anymore, because we're selling less gasoline. So, um, again, back to, we've gotta come up with some ideas on how we're gonna generate revenue, because nobody's gonna build a road for free for us. We're gonna have to spend real big dollars to get it done in the future.
Well, I think Supervisor Goodman wanted to go out and do some of that shovel stuff.
Yeah, and I, I, I know how to do that myself, but...
I want the tractor.
We'll get you out on the road recycling machine when we get here. But the, um, to your point, the issue, and that was a big issue on this, even on the PRTA, that plan, um, was peanut butter spread way too thin.
Right.
And the reality was, those projects were maybe 40, 50% funded in the PRTA, and that was gonna be an issue that we were all gonna have to deal with as we went through all of this. And so we can't, um, be overly lofty, overly, if we're gonna have a plan, it's gotta be planned, that's realistically funded as well, a, and with some cushion. Um, if, especially if there's not flexibility there, so flexibility would be helpful.
Leo, how much longer do you see this presentation going?
Uh, this is strategic priority number two of five, so...
Hearing, hearing that, we're gonna take a little recess.
Thank you, Chairman. And I was, I was advised by council that I need to slow down a little bit, I'm going too fast, but I think it's because I, I know how much information there is here, I know there's a lot of stuff, and I know people don't wanna be here all day. Like you said last time, we took two four-hour sessions in two, two different days, if you remember. So, I'll try to balance, I'll try to go slow enough, but I know we got a lot to get through. Just to wrap up where we're at, I, I, I heard, um, guidance on, um, flexibility, still a unified plan, um, kind of grassroots community efforts, and probably, um, same ballot, but All right, um, I guess, like I said, I think that's probably the most important one of the day, but we, we could move on to the next slide, we've got a lot of different types of infrastructure. Wanted to make sure to address broadband and, uh, the progress that we've made, um, over the last year and a half. Uh, we did, uh, develop a, uh, a project program that would give full coverage to the county. It would be wireless at this point, but we think that that's a great, um, stepping stone, and something that will still be needed, um, for its own purposes in the long run, but essentially, we will have agreements with schools and cities and towns on putting up towers that will provide this service, um, and for students, it will be, uh, there will be chips in their computers, so they can have that service even, uh, with their laptops from home, and wherever they're going on the bus, um, for these schools. So it's a $9 million project, which, um, considering that's gonna fill the gaps of broadband coverage at the wireless level, is a pretty low price tag. And we were able to get, um, $4 million total of federal allocated funding toward this, um, and thanks to Tammy Ryle, who's been, who was creating this along with Peter Lynn, um, and, and then the other five, uh, we're, we're using of the federal ARPA money, which is, broadband is a purpose of those funds as well.
Leo, were they able to meet with all of the supervisors individually?
Um, I, I believe so, um, and the team that you're referring to is the second paragraph, it's, um, uh, this is for full broadband coverage, but using fiber, and fiber is a higher capacity, and is, uh, in the long term, uh, of the future. Uh, wireless is good as well, but fiber's probably gonna come, um, in, in all reality, by the time it gets implemented, it might take five years, you know, to get it there. And, um, and they'll still serve different purposes, and, so the fiber coverage that, that you're referring to is one that the, uh, recent federal bill is funding, um, to a level that has never been funded before, to the point that it, for, you know, a lot of these rural places, the private sector's not gonna go out there, 'cause it'll be too expensive to put the infrastructure, they're not gonna get enough customers to get a payback in time for a return on investment in any reasonable time, if they would even get it. So, um, I think, in this case, the federal government's probably subsidizing about 75% of that infrastructure. Um, and they're doing it through grants, and the Arizona Commerce Authority is, are gonna be the lead facilitator of that. And I, so I hope, um, that you all were able to meet with Tammy and, um, the private sector to see what, what proposals are. They, um, they wanna make sure first, that we have the correct numbers of underserved and unserved residents, because that's what the grant allocation to each state is gonna initially be based on. And then, um, folks in the state will, um, compete based on criteria, um, to win a grant for their project. And we think that we have, um, a pretty good private sector partner that, um, has, quite frankly, private equity capital funds, that they wanna invest in this, and partner with, um, the federal government, and us, and the state, so that, um, fiber will be accessible to, um, to all residents, and even those in the rural parts. And for them, a lot of them do qualify for the universal service, so when there's a little bit of a question on, well, great, if you're gonna get fiber out there, but can they afford whatever that monthly payment's gonna be, um, a lot of them will. Uh, I, I think most of them, they'll look into exactly who would qualify in those areas, and who doesn't, but, um, the majority of them do.
That, that was, that was bead funds, was that great, is that bead, wasn't not, it was bead?
Sounds familiar, I think that's what they were referring to.
Eighty, eighty to $100 million was what we expected received from, yeah.
Right, yep, um, it may, and it's estimates at this point, but the whole project may be 150 million plus or minus, and, um, with the federal part of that, hopefully to, to be doing about 100 million. Oh, I'm sorry, I, I think I might, one more, one more on there, which is important, too, and, um, top of mind for everybody. Um, you know, the county isn't, um, in the water business, per se, we don't have any statutory authority to be in the water business, we don't have a utility, um, but we do have a lot of influence from, um, organizing and making decisions, and we're, we're, we are, potentially, we looked into it, of course, when Johnson Utilities was having all the issues that they were having, and there was some legislation that was, but once Epcor took it, um, that, that bill kinda got dropped. But there's a lot of other, um, reasons why us being able to partner, or in some way, shape, or form, in the wastewater and recharge business is very beneficial to the county, and, and can help us to win projects that we have competed for, that didn't have a solution, and that we couldn't be a part of a solution because of the current statutes. Um, Pima County is allowed to, they have, um, that, a long time ago, was put into place when their cities and towns weren't quite ready to stand up those type of services, and so they still have that. Um, so they're in the wastewater business, and, uh, the cities and towns have to consent to that. So we've been exploring, um, whether or not we could expand that population criteria, so that we could potentially, um, have some participation in wastewater and recharge here locally, which of course we need.
And it may also just end up in our lap someday, as with Rio Verde and Maricopa County supervisors, that's really not theirs, that's Scottsdale, but somebody's gotta help those folks up there, so...
Right.
We're responsible for all the citizens as well, so...
Yep, it would allow us to participate. Uh, I think Supervisor Miller has maybe already started to have conversations, and with the utilities board, and, um, maybe I'll just, I'll mention a couple of things on here, and then turn it over to Supervisor Miller, since he's really, um, neck-deep, or over the head-deep in this water, in this water game. Um, we do have collaborations, um, going on with, um, and thankfully, we're able to, with the ARPA funds, because water and wastewater infrastructure was also a part of that. Um, so we're able to do that, partner with Queen Creek on a project where water will be locally recharged, and we'll be able to offset the CAGRID fees on those bills for current residents and, and future, and HOAs. And so that's a pretty big deal, that's one where you're gonna get your return on investment, um, significantly, you'll get it in seven years, and then ongoing.
So, Leo, could you see that, can you put something together so that we can start communicating this to our, our constituents? They understand these are some things that are coming down, 'cause we get a lot of questions in regards to the CAGRID, and they see that on their bill, but if we can put the message
But if we can put the message out there that we've been involved in some projects to help reduce that cost, and this is the project we're working on, these are some items that I'm talking about that we probably need to do better at communicating to our constituents, rather than just in a setting like this, we need to put something out there in mailer or whatever, to get the message out there that, guys, we're actively involved trying to reduce costs, or ta, and that's a tax.
Yes, it's on the property tax.
That's a tax. So, anyway.
Yeah, it is, it's probably...
If you could help us get something like that together, I think all five of us, we probably have some areas that we can sell, share that information.
Yeah, yeah, it's probably four hundred dollars a year on average on that property tax bill for, you know, thousands, ten thousand residents at the current time. And so, yeah, we can, and Monday, when we have that quarterly meeting, let's, let's sync up with Queen Creek on, on what that message would look like. And then, same thing, we're looking, and just to make the point, we're looking into unincorporated areas, and some incorporated with the city of Casa Grande, along in their planning area, where there just isn't, there aren't solutions readily available, and I know Brent has been working with Arizona Water in the city, and we're, we're just trying to, to find solutions that don't exist yet. It's, it's hard to participate on the sidelines, we can, we can help facilitate, but we probably make, um, make further progress if, if we could legally be in the game. And then, I guess I'd rather have Supervisor Miller, if you want to talk about the, the Penal County Water Stakeholder Group that you chair, and some of the work that you've been doing around the analysis for the demand and, and what's out there.
Thank you, Leo. Mr. Chair, just real quick, and I, the stakeholders group has kind of hit a lull, and that's due to some, uh, the ability not to have some meetings. We have a, we have a modeling, uh, program that we put together that shows the demand not quite as critical as, uh, once thought of, you know, three, four years ago. There is a, there's a key factor to it, though, and it's tied to the city of Eloy and its demand. They've, they came to us and asked for legislation to reduce their, their demand because their designation, so we did that. Now, they want to increase it, but the state has not processed their, processed their application to increase it, uh, because they don't, you know, I don't know what the state's real position is, whether they think there's a justification for it or not. But it does, it is a key factor to the modeling that we've done. And until we establish that number, whatever their number's going to finally be, then that makes, the, the calculations can be final, and we can see, really, the shortfall that's, that's there, if, if any. There was some numbers that were run, it just really showed us over a hundred years, we were only ten thousand acre feet short. For the certificates that have been issued as of today, there would be no new certificates, but that gives us a starting point. So, anyway, that, so when I get that meeting facilitated with Eloy and we're able to really wrap up the, uh, the modeling tight, so that, the Department of Water Resources has reviewed it. Again, though, now when we go to the Department of Water Resources, I don't know where they're going to be in this new administration, it's really hard to say, but, um, I'll tell you, the, the big picture of what the, the stakeholders group is really looking at is a multi-pronged approach to the solution for the Penal AMA. And I'm going to tell you, that will also apply to the other AMAs. I think at the, uh, the State of the State address, the governor pointed out that there's problems in the West Valley that are the same as ours. So, and I've always said that, whatever legislation we're able to move forward with for solutions to water policy in Arizona, I hope are applied to all AMAs and actually all, the entire state. But it's going to be, uh, there's going to have to be more recharge, there's going to have to be credit for those recharges, the, the water quality that goes through a sewer plant has to, to meet a certain quality before it can be recharged. This is where the county needs to at least be partner in a lot of this, because there's so much of this county that is not incorporated, but yet, really, if we want to protect our aquifer, we really need to have a more aggressive sewer operations throughout the county and not rely on septic tanks, and where we can take those septic tanks off the system and put them into, to treatment plants. There's going to have to be a component for, um, uh, augmentation of water, that's probably some type of fund that people will have to pay into for either D-SAL or some type of program like that. And so, like I said, it's just going to be a multi-pronged, uh, approach to the future. It's not going to happen overnight, and it'll be interesting to see where the department wants to go with that. They agree with us that it will be a multi-pronged approach at, at some level, but it's just what percentages of what will really take, um, take to move, advance the ball. So, um, that's the, the high level, I certainly can answer a question or two if somebody has it, but we are still working on it. We have a real technical group of law, of attorneys that have prepared some language for some legislation, but we've been kind of advised that there won't be any water legislation passed this year. So, whether we drop it this year or not, I don't know, we're still kind of hemming and hawing about that. And can you, if, do you have any questions, I'm happy to try and answer them.
And, and this probably goes along with that, because I, we did get, I think all of us got a, something from CSA that talked about how the governor's going to expand the water and, and was basically inviting more government officials to be a part of that. Is that correct?
Yeah, so I'm applying, I'm, I'm applying for that, uh, that committee. She basically dissolved the one that Governor Ducey had, she's going to form one of her own, so I'm going to ask, I'm going to, I'm going to try and be an applicant and get on that committee, again, to just stay abreast of where the policies and, and the thought process goes forward in the future.
So, with that, that was something that I'm going to, I was going to apply as well. I don't know where that all falls down, but you're, I just, I just got that, and I was just thinking, you know what? I think the more hands-on deck in this kind of situation is probably better than, than just one.
Yeah, and I don't know...
But I don't know how much she's opening it up to.
I don't either. And, um, but the discussions go on, and I will say, I, um, I, I knew about the, the West Valley kind of situation probably two years ago. The director from the Department of Water Resources had indicated that there are other areas within the state that are facing the same scenarios that we have here in Penal County. Uh, it's, you know, it's not a doomsday today, but it, this is the time for action to plan for the future, is really how I see it, and so we have to work on it.
Um, I guess, from staff's perspective, is, is there anything else that you want us to be doing around that? Or is the movements and steps we're trying to take right now in the right direction, or as, as the county, as an organization, or staff, is there, is there anything else guidance-wise or kind of goal-wise that you want us to be doing?
You know, Supervisor Miller alluded to the certificates that's already in place.
Right.
I think a better education to the public where those certificates are at. I know as some of these developments come online and they're ready to start building and breaking ground, they already have those certificates, and they've had those certificates for years. And so, I think it would be beneficial to communicate that to the public as a whole, because not having enough information sent, kind of has a way of, of creating a panic in people. And, and so, I think getting that kind of information out to the public, this is where we're at, these are the ones that have certificates, I think you just mentioned that with those certificates, we're about ten thousand acre feet or something like that?
Yeah, and there's, um, there's actually some, been some reckless isolation with the ones that have been issued and the ones that are being built on. And I don't, I mean, I, I want to just kind of say, there's always that chance that the state could take a certificate away if you have not started your subdivision. So, there's, that is out there that is actually within statute. And then, I want, can I, can I add something else to this? Because this is, this is what the public are seeing, all these quote-unquote subdivisions being built, but they're built to rent. Those, those operations, those communities do not require a certificate of assured water. So, the certificate of assured water is not water law. It is consumer protection, it is actually in real estate law. So, um, so because they're not selling these units, because these rentals are, uh, just short-term is the way they really look at them, they're not required to get a certificate of assured water. A sidebar note, there has been discussion that maybe these types of, of communities would have to join the GRD, that they would have to be at least part of the replenishment program. I pointed out at the CAP meeting that, I don't, I don't know how much opposition we'll meet, but that would mean that every apartment building would also have to join the GRD. Because if you're basing it off of a rental scenario, then all rentals, I think, would be subject to that same legislation. So, there's, there's some complexity to, to really how we go with that approach, and I don't know what the appetite for the legislature will be in that, in that as well, that it starts getting a little more complicated as you start diving into it. But everybody needs to understand that the certificate of assured water is not tied to water law, it's actually tied to consumer protection. When you buy a house, the developer is telling you, you will have a water for a hundred years at that home. So, that's, and that's where that comes from it. And you'll find it in your public report that I know you all read when you bought a house. So...
So, I have a comment and a clarifying question, if I may. So, I heard Supervisor Goodman talk about, you know, clarifying the message, and as Supervisor Miller was speaking, I just happened to look up, you know, the, the articles on water, and I can see where there's some confusing messages to the public. In fact, I, I saw an article on the front page of the newspaper that talked about water shortages. So, we have August 12th, Task Force Finds Penal Water Solid. August 15th, twenty, these are all 2022, County Leader Searches Solutions Amid Water Shortage. October 14th, sixty percent of land may be fouled due to water shortage. And if you go back and forth, it depends on what day it is, I guess, and who's writing the, the article, but, but we really need to get a consistent message and, and, um, and then consider, um, is it, is it, and I think this goes to the question Mr. Miller had previously, or the request for a discussion, solar development, i- is it right for us as a board to approve the, the bill to rent if it impacts the, those folks who have a hundred-year certificate? So, that's another, you know, really an issue we need to, to examine. Are we, are we impacting those certificates for the non-renters? And you're the expert.
And that's, that's a great point, and I mean, I think that that's the, the question that, um, elected officials throughout the state are kind of wrestling with, is what impact will this build-to-rent, um, program really have on the water and the water supply in the future? And how do we ask them to participate in securing and maintaining that water supply? Is where I see it. And, and it, and there's two things here going, there's two different things going on. There's the residential side of thing and, and the, and the AMNI, you know, the municipalities and industry, and then there's the agricultural, and the agricultural community is dealing with some different issues. They're not going to get the CAP water up till 2030 like they were told, so the state gave them the opportunity to drill. We really don't know how that's going to affect the program going forward, and, uh, the farmers have the first right that was established in the 1981 Groundwater Act, although they, whether they'll have the water to, to produce a, a profitable crop through, through pumping will be, well, we'll wait to see. But, um, so we, we have a lot of dynamics going in here, and I, I think you have to almost start breaking it down into more, uh, so we can get clarity on each one of these things and then see how it ties to the, the whole program. Does that, I don't know if that helps any.
Sounds like it would need to work, sir.
You got, got the menu there?
Yeah, she's, I can, she's lurking. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
I mean, it's, it's a pretty big topic with...
It is, it is.
We could use some education.
And, you know, and, um, I'll, I'll be helped to facilitate or help you facilitate maybe some, some, a couple of water attorneys and a couple of engineers to come in and really kind of give us more detail going forward. But I think this build-to-rent thing is going to really start showing up in, in more and more discussions going forward.
As it should.
And as it should.
Okay. Yep, we'll, we'll set that up, and I think that'll help us if, it sounds like we're, what we're doing right now, we're sort of on the right track as an organization, and we'll, and as we get some of those, it'll probably help guide on next steps. It seems like it's really a changing, a changing game, it's pretty dynamic as you go.
Yeah, and these are baby steps we're taking, but they're, they're good in the right direction, and, and I have to give kudos to Tammy, she's really monitoring a lot of this stuff and a little more micromanaging that stuff for us and, and keeping us in the loop, or keeping you and me in the loop on some of this.
Yeah, so, on, I guess if I'm, end this with a fun note, and back to Supervisor Goodman's comment, we can, we could work with Queen Creek on Monday on that messaging, but we also plan to build out that recharge system to pipe along the Queen Creek Wash and put a bike path on it, which will connect into the town, so we'll go from the town bike trail system all the way out along the Queen Creek Wash, all the way up to the canal and back. And you know we have that trail that goes along the canal all the way down here to Florence, all the way up to AJ. I don't know who's going to be doing that much biking, but at least there's an opportunity to, to go out through there, and it'd be nice, a nice, pretty ride along, along the wash.
ATV Trail.
We're not in that business yet. All right, let's, we can move on, and we'll just give you some highlights at, at our airports, we're just, we've negotiated some significant leases, and I know you're a part of that, um, some of you, if you remember, meetings with those companies. We've, we've got a few more also in the works that are being negotiated, and I know Chris is a big part of that. We, we were able to secure eight million dollars in federal grants for runway drainage electrical improvements, and then we're going to take, well, ten million plus or minus allocation from ARPA to do significant water and wastewater improvements at, at our airports. Um, and then, another highlight was that we were able to get the FAA to designate about almost five hundred acres on the east, east side toward, toward the 10 for non-aeronautical use, which could be helpful for companies looking to do any kind of operations over there. The only downside we have is that it's, there's still a quitclaim deed on there that the Department of Defense could take in an emergency situation, and so that really does prevent really large capital investment, because nobody wants to have that risk as slight as that may be. So, we'll work on that, but I, I don't know how much progress we'll make. I think State Land's been trying to work on something similar in the West Valley and wasn't getting anywhere, so we'll do our best, but I don't, I don't know if we'll ever be able to change that. And then, I'll just go through some of the facility highlights that, I mean, you all have known there, you've been to the ribbon cuttings, you know, we've completed those satellite offices throughout the county renovations or new builds, and some of them, you know, just supervisor mainly, but a lot of them also have multiple services at those campuses. County Attorney's Building, we finished, and Development Services Building was finished, where we're currently working on the Public Defense Services and Medical Examiner's Buildings, and I think they'll, they'll both be finished this year. And then, in the hopper, we have the Elections Facility, and then the Recorder-Treasurer-Assessor Building I mentioned earlier, and we're now doing those at the Construction Manager at Risk Program, and so now we've implemented that, we went through the first one finalizing, we'll use that on the next one, and we'll probably use those on most, if not all, of the major projects that we do in the county. It just helps for coordination, cost management, design and participation of the customer kind of from day one to finish, and so we just think it's going to be a better coordinated process and get a better product. There's various other renovations we've really been doing all throughout the county with, with all the departments. And then, we'll talk a little bit about recreation, and I think it is important to highlight that when it comes to parks and libraries, we are expanding into realms that we hadn't in the past. So, we, we always support the library system, and we support the local volunteer libraries... So we, we always support the library system and we support the local volunteer libraries, but we're expanding the library in Arizona City, staffing it. Uh, we set up the library and operations over in Santan and are staffing it. And then really Peralta Regional Park is our first real regional park, kind of Maricopa County Regional Park-like. And, and there's some others in the plan. Some things that sometimes seem small, but end up really a big deal here at the board, like expanding the parking lot at a trailhead so that 100, 200 cars don't overflow into residential streets ends up a big deal. So we're working on that. And, and really we're working on, like as Supervisor Goodman mentioned, what, what type of park, what size and location, as you've seen in the work study in the Santan area? Because Santan's a large densely populated area, none like it unincorporated in the state. Probably not too many in the country. And so we really are getting into different things that we probably haven't traditionally been in, in the county, but we also didn't traditionally have Santan Valley in the county. So, um, so we have made a lot of progress there. We did fairground study and, and we'll continue to implement on those studies as we, as we have the funding identified and, and exactly where we want to be. Next slide, please. Well, I guess before we moved on to that, anything else on the infrastructure side or any other guidance or anything you think we missed that we didn't include in there that you want to see? Okay, yeah, the, the San Manuel Airport is included in that. Yeah, the Pinell Airport and the San Manuel Airport. Okay, so strategic priority three, which really overlaps a lot with two, kind of more on the planning side, but calling it balanced and flexible growth. We develop and implement strategies to effectively address growth, sustainability and livability in our dynamic county. And so one of the common themes is that we're working with the municipalities and the state and the community groups in this, in these planning processes. And the reality is, is we are meeting with them on a regular basis with the cities and towns, especially in, in their planning areas. So we're coordinating, develop with potential future annexations. And then we work with State Land. As you know, see, we created a brand new land use category for them. You did that as a major comp plan amendment that will provide flexibility for those lands. As we know, that State Land is the biggest landowner in the county for future development. As a part of that flexibility on large master planned communities, whether they're residential or commercial industrial, you pass those. If you remember, any, any master plan over a certain amount of acres, you're going to be able to have zoning districts within that are flexible because those are kind of generational products or, you know, 10-year, 20-year projects. And they need flexibility to the market over time and they don't know exactly what they're going to do at one, one moment in time. Tessa kind of kicked that off and then there's, there's others that have inspired to have that kind of a thing. And then an example of us playing with the community is with, with Gold, with Gold Canyon Community, Inc. and Arizona State University. And I think that final document is, is pretty close to wrapping up if it hasn't already. And then we've been talking with State Land there since they own a lot of the land in Gold Canyon and, and what level of planning are they open to, which would be a key, key factor. And then, as you've known, and we've heard a lot from you and the community about flexibility within our code and updates in our code that are needed. It's a comprehensive process. It's taken a while. We have, are going to be scheduling P and Z Planning and Zoning Commission to meet twice a month instead of one because they got long meetings and they got a lot on their plate. Some of it is work volume. Some of it is just culture and tone or chairmanship of the commission that makes some of these longer. But, but we do, either way, they're going to need more time. We want them to meet at least twice a month. And hopefully in the next few months, they'll be done with their review and we'll be able to actually bring this development code update to you for review and approval and adjustments if needed. Any questions on any of that that we've been working on or comments on that? Okay, next slide, please. And then, you know, as we were asked to look into how can we improve there in the development process and in providing that service to the community and the customers? We did have an expert consultant, if you remember, come in and do a review, Mo Glancy, that had several recommendations that, some of them we were implementing already, others that we're continuing to, to implement. And we'll continue to look at the organizational structure and the process workflow to see where kind of synergies and team facilitation could occur. And then this is kind of shifting gears, but we did want to mention that we did, that the County Attorney's Office has been taking the lead, but they did do some programs to improve with the illegal dumping and then also to provide, provide funds for, for code compliance type cleanup for those that, that, that don't have any of those funds. And we put some of those in those ARPA monies, if you remember. And then on the topic of affordable housing, as that was a pretty big talk, topic that came up. And I know maybe there's different words we can use really, I mean, affordable or attainable or workforce and, and they're, they're probably all a little bit different in reality. But if, if you remember, we did support a couple of the cities that had affordable projects within their city limits. And we were supporting kind of the HUD tax, federal exemption for that, that would help move those projects along. But I do think, and I'll probably open up the conversation on that at this point, but we're, we're going to need to have a work session similar to what you're talking about with water, like who has certificates and where and where do, where are they doing these kinds of things so that there's a big picture understanding? I think we need to do that for multifamily housing, workforce housing, attainable housing. How much of it do we currently have? And if we do, where is it and how, or how much is totally, is currently entitled for that? Or where do we see, because where do we want it and where do we don't? Because obviously we're getting into that a lot these days. And I think, you know, there's varying degrees, but I guess to go to your banana quote, nobody really wants anything built near them anywhere. But where do we as a county, how do we want it? And, you know, and it changes over time. We were the affordable housing community in the past, but we were the affordable, single family, big backyard, raise a young family home in the past, right? And that's why all those subdivisions came up and they all got, but now it's changed. Those aren't as affordable or really affordable anymore. So what are we developing into and what do we want to see now we're progressing to that true more multifamily type nature? And even steps in that direction, sometimes when it's even just like attached garages, you know, people aren't liking. So what truly do we want and where and how much? I think we really need to have an overlay with a map to have that conversation, but.
If I may, Mr. Chairman? You know, and, and that build to rent program is a single-family house with a small backyard, a small front yard, the amenity, the, I think the, the, you know, certainly the front yards and everything are all taken care of through the, through your rent. The rent's kind of expensive, but it gives you that feeling of a single house, but yet it's rental. And the qualifying, to qualify for that is not, is not as difficult as it is for buying a house. I mean, so, and in, in this environment, in this community, these are going to be pretty popular, I believe.
Yeah, and that's helping to meet the workforce housing needs around that area.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Sure.
Interject a question, Leo. So I know up in Chan, I think it's Chandler or Gilbert, they have housing units that are set aside, not for Section 8 or so on. It's, it's folks who work. They're, you know, making 40 or 50 grand a year, but they're in, I don't know if they've dictated to a developer, hey, if you have, if you have 600 units, one or two needs to be, you know, the, the lower rental price or something. That may be something to consider getting with them and seeing what that program is. I recall a fellow I know.
I've heard of those.
Moved into a really nice apartment or condominium. He doesn't own it and he rents it for a lot less. And there is an income cap, which allows him to, to move up the chain in his workplace and then launch out and get a house. So that's something I think we, you know, could consider.
Yep, we'll look into that.
The UDA used to have that type of a program. I mean, that was actually what brought me to Pinell County because it was a, a housing program where it, it had a cap on the interest rate, but what they really were subsidizing was the interest rate and not the, but, and similar for rents. I mean, they have a program where they can, where they can help, you know, offset those, those higher numbers.
So if we, if we, I don't know, if I'm spitballing this, as a board said, okay, 1% or 2% of projects over 250 apartments need to be set aside for that program. Is that possible? Is it practical? Is it sane?
I see Chris taking notes. Do we tie that into the development agreement? I, I don't know. I mean, that's, I'm just asking.
Because that would solve the problem of not, you know, I don't want these poor people in my neighborhood. Well, it's, it's, they're just people who haven't, haven't moved up the ladder.
And there's nothing wrong with that, what you're just said either, because I was a young once. Yeah, a long, long time ago. But the reality is I lived in an apartment, my wife and I, when we first got married, and it was in an area. But there was other influential people around us. I don't know how to put it, but there was some nice homes around us and everything else. And it, it gave us a sense of some value, you know what I mean? Personal value to us. And so to your point, I think that those things need to be done within our communities. They need to be designating some areas. I didn't realize there was a program out there that would allow stuff like that. Maybe that's where, you know, with our, with our community development, we start having some of these discussions to bring these in. You know, years ago, Homachi was talking about some of the waves of the future. These type of apartment complexes were coming in. And what is that? The utopia of the round Higley Road in Gilbert, where they've got apartments there and then they've got their own little garden area that the people can go in there and work at the garden and they get some of the rewards. Or they have a little farmer's market that the people that don't want to spend the time in the garden, they can buy from the farmer's market there. And so those type of things, we ought to be looking at, making part of some of our development agreements and then the affordable housing. I like what you're talking about there.
Well, on to Supervisor Miller's comment. You know, my son went to a trade school and what they did for dorms was they would say, okay, we'll take a block of these apartments, these apartments, these apartments, at different rent levels. And granted, you know, National Bank of Dad paid for that, but, but the point being it was affordable. And I think that I've talked to some companies coming in that says, you know, we, we need workers, we need this, we need that. If they were able, so say they go through training, like we put the Drive 48 up and this other one up. Okay, you get the training. Well, that's great, but now can you afford to work there? Because maybe you've traveled in, you can't afford to travel from your home across the county to this area. If those companies could subsidize some block of apartments and say, okay, you know, for the first two months, we'll sub, we'll do, you know, 100% of the rent. And this, you have to work this out in the development agreement and with the companies because it's expensive. But we'll do 100% of the rent, okay, on, you know, the next two months, we'll do 75%. And then they keep weaning it off so that that person can afford to break that poverty cycle and, um, get a good paying job and be able to live in that area so that after a few months, they're able to actually afford the rent. Because as you say, those, those rental places that we're talking about, the one-story standalones, they're not cheap. And, and to rent one of those, I think, my understanding from one of my sons, you know, they want to see three months of income to rent that. Well, if you don't have that job, how do you get there? And so some subsidy has to be made. And I don't want it to be us necessarily, but somewhere along the line that has to happen so that you can break some of these poverty cycles. Just, just saying.
Oh, that's all right. And these, these, these build to rent things are, have caught the attention of the hedge funds. The hedge funds, after they're completely built and they start renting them out, they'll come in and buy them. They're paying $500,000 a door on these things with the idea that they'll have a cash flow from the rental. And so, I mean, they're going to be popular in different arenas for different reasons. It's going to be interesting to see in the next, probably five to 10 years, really, what they amount to, to the economy.
Okay, yeah, as we start to map and do this, we'll research programs too, so we can throw all that out there at the same time.
One final comment on that. We may have sort of touched on it, but if our, if our HUD, and I was looking for Alanda, but if our HUD can get a program where just the interest rate is subsidized on, that might be an idea too, to look into. So in an ordinary housing addition that we've approved, you know, a couple of percent would, would be earmarked for this, you know, perhaps a HUD program where the interest rate was discounted very low and makes it affordable. And then, then that supplies a place for someone hiring Nicola, Lucid, so on, to, to place an employee or to see that employee can have housing.
This would become more and more popular if it is with interest rates rising for mortgages, then this program really does make sense.
Sorry, Leo, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good, good comments. We'll bring that, that'll help us develop our work session to be more productive. We'll, we'll, we'll put that element in there too, both kind of planning and programming. And then a, as we move down to the next topic, I think something similar, probably except minus the programming. But on solar panels, and I know from just the last manager's meeting, I think City of Coolidge went through this exercise and so did Eloy. And they're overlaying on maps, you know, how much and where do we have solar entitled or ability to have solar? And I think Coolidge was saying that they have more than any municipality in the state, like 16% of their land is, are, it can be used for solar. And so they're not really trying to expand that further, but very similar conversations around, well, where, how much do we want it? Where do we want it? Where do we not want it? Especially so that as these people are doing these bids on these projects or to be suppliers or whatever, and they're trying to put all this together. They have an idea and not get, get through to the, you know, 11th hour or 11th step in a 12-step process and then realize that it's not going to go. So, um, we don't have all the information here in front of us now, but that's what, you know, if you want, give us that direction and we will, we will do a work session with an overlay map to, you could see all, where is green energy? Where is solar even able to happen currently? Maybe where the interest is and then where, because I think, I think we have one coming up on the, maybe on the 25th, that's going to, you know, come to you. And, and I, I just, I think we need a more comprehensive sense about solar as, as, you know, energy sources are needed, but where, where do you want it and where do you not want it? And how much of it? And how much is enough or, or, you know, whatever that may be.
Mr. Chair, I mean, I think this ties back to our comp plan where we say, you know, okay, here's the power line systems, here's the gen tie to the, to the system. And where could you have solar? Where is going to be residential? Where, where do you want this out of the way and where does it line up? So that's another piece of that map. Just like, here's, here's commercial, here's a road, here's, here's power.
Right, right, yep.
I think Elon Musk said we need 100 square miles of solar to power the whole US, if I recall correctly. Does that sound right? And if, if, if we have State Land or County Land, something we might want to consider is looking at State Land and saying, hey, we, you know, we're, we're installing solar fields all over the county. And what if we set aside or ask, ask the state to set aside a large swath so that investors could buy sections of that and have one location for solar that, you know, is not as objectionable to, to these solar fields that are near residential? And I think that's something to consider is having a one more central and just kind of get it over with. That's a big.
Well, I, I'm thinking of the, the last one that we, that we listened to and it was turned down. And there was no objection from anybody that I'm aware of in regards to that solar plant, that solar facility. And it was a farm that was fallow. And you've got a lot of farmers out there, especially in the Pinell AMA, that are looking at cutbacks on their water. And this is a way that they can generate some revenue. But then in addition to that, you talk about the economic development side of it and what kind of tax revenues are coming off of those solar plants, those solar facilities. And not only to us, but to the other, like school districts and things of that nature that they're getting attacked from that, there's going to be some more of these type of projects come our way. Then in addition to that, we're, we're, we've been hearing from APS and SRP that there could be some blackouts come this summer because of the cutbacks that are, for instance, our coal plants are being shut down throughout the state. We've got what happened in Randolph, two gas plant. We've got what happened in Randolph, two gas plant, the additions of some gas that was supposed to go in there or that was, was proposed to go in there. So we're looking at some additional cutbacks on, on our power, the ability to generate power. And there's a real possibility that we're going to be in a position. So there's a lot more to look at when it's coming to these solar plants. You know, a farmer that could take it for 20, 25 years and get revenue off of that, and he's looking at having to put his property into fallow anyway, and they can generate, they can lease that out. And then that can actually be turned back, back into whatever homes? Because some of that is zone residential at some point when it goes into the market. I think that was part of the discussion we had, was that could have been homes, but can't build homes there because the water's not there. And so, I guess that's some things, that's why I thought, one of the reasons why I wanted to have some, why Miller and I was thinking that we'd have some of these discussions was that, so we kind of get a feel for where everybody's at, so that our staff has some ideas. And I think that's the reason why this is part of the discussion right now, where are we at as a whole? Now, is there needs to be some strategic locations where those are at? I don't think just making it to where it's the state that does that, that, you know, we specifically put that on the state, because there are some farmers out there that are having to look at, what are they going to do? How are they going to make some adjustments on what they've got? And so, there needs to be some flexibility to a degree that it's not just state land, but even the private landowner himself has the ability to do that in this area. These, these solar plants, what, 20, 25 years is the max is what they get out of them? And then it goes, they either replace it or they do something else.
Real quick, I want to kind of jump off something Supervisor Kavanaugh had mentioned about the state lands. Leo, do we know what the policy is from state land about, they lease? They like to lease land because they don't have to sell it, it generates a revenue. And they, they, they've done it for ag for years, and they've even done it for grazing. Would they, do they have a policy about solar leases on state land? Because I think, I mean, I'm kind of curious if, and that, that was a great question, Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Yeah, and, and they've been watching us as well, and the topic came up in our last meeting with state land. And, and we invited them, let them know we wanted to do this work session, and if they wanted to come over and do it with us. Especially since a lot of those 25-year leases, they are, they are trying to get through state land. And I, but I don't know if they have a policy per se. And I think when we brought it up, they were saying, obviously with Lisa now being transitioned and who the new commissioner is going to be, it was kind of an open, but they were kind of looking for our, our policy and our feedback as well. So I think, I don't know if they have one per se. I think we kind of wanted jointly, and maybe it's, you know, maybe for them with Penale County, it's, it's dependent on us as well. So we did invite them to be a part of that, and so we can have them here at the work session, so we could work through a lot of that together. But I don't know if they have a formal policy at this point.
You know, there's a, there's a stretch of highway from Boulder City to Las Vegas. There, there has to be over 1,000 acres of, of just solar panels out there. I mean, it, it looks like a lake, it, it, it's, you know, so big and so massive. So, and I got to believe that that's probably state land. I doubted this private land out there. But anyway, some, another place to look.
Yeah, we'll make sure, we'll, we'll have that conversation with them and hopefully bring them here and have them be a part of that work session. If, if anything, they can participate or answer questions if needed, but also know what, what this board is thinking as, as they move forward too. Okay, anything else on that side? Like I said, there was a lot in infrastructure already, so they kind of go hand in hand. But anything else from the maybe development side, planning, development side? All right, we, the, so that's three of them down, two more to go. And I think these ones are probably faster as they don't have the heavy tax and transportation funding policy elements to them. Organizational excellence and effectiveness. We create a workplace culture cultivating motivated and successful employees who are proud to serve the citizens of Penale County. We promote and develop secure technology solutions that enhance connectivity, create operational efficiencies, and provide easier access to county services and information. So we kind of lumped up culture and engagement and motivation in the, in the same category. So just to give some background on culture, because some were here at the time and some weren't, some maybe remember. But we did embark on a facilitated culture development process with the employees. We started back in 17, and we started when that was, you know, the, the new board that sat and the new electeds as well. And, and everybody throughout the county participated. It was really neat, even the sheriff's office, county attorney's office, other elected offices were there and participated. We did a survey on culture in the beginning of that to see where we were at when we started. And then we had done some surveys throughout. 2020 was the most recent one we did, obviously with the pandemic. This was a very kind of team-engaged co-creation process. And, and one of the things that people liked the most about it was to get to know and to work on things with others throughout the county that they had never would normally cross paths with or even know that the county does this. And, and that was one of the great benefits to that movement. When the pandemic started, of course, so we would been on, you know, social distancing and everything else. So that pretty much got put on hold for a while, so we're, we're, we're bringing that back. But just for more context, in that last survey, we got maybe 25% or so, 500, I think, 549 respondents, which is pretty good for a survey like that. We did score excellent in the category of purpose, and then very good in the categories of philosophy and priorities. And those categories all have different elements of the workplace and environment in them. And then there was comments that we received along the way too, that resulted in efforts like the creation of that communications and marketing department, a lot of things we did. Because communication was, was a big one, and just what's going on in the county, and what is leadership saying, and what's going on with others in the county. And then recognition was another, a, a, a big feedback comment for improvement for us. And so, that's why we do the employee spotlights. That's why we do a lot here with the years of service and the retirement recognitions that you take pictures with. And then just leadership development and training. And so, we had HR do a lot, some of their own, and they're developing a training department now, supervisor trainings that we get good feedback on. And then we have, we've had some, you know, leadership, even Patrick Abara did further leadership and facilitating a customer service environment with, with leaders and, and large departments. And then we send them to like ASU's Certified Public Manager Program, there's the NACO Program that people like and others. And so, we do have a lot of that, we're continuing to build on it. One of the things that we're looking at now is the Toastmasters that folks here like to do just for public speaking. But also, they have other kind of comprehensive leadership programs. And the nice thing is they're local, and it gives the employees that opportunity again to connect with others throughout the county that they wouldn't normally through their course of work. And then, one of the things that we, we have challenges with is just the human nature of teamwork environment and how folks get along and how, how do they, how do they work with each other productively? What things do, do they do behavior-wise that, you know, either negatively degenerate trust or build trust, and, and all those elements that really matter? And, and so, we do have, we did have an expert team facilitator who worked with one of our departments, when they're newly forming especially, and they're starting to get bumpy. So we, we do want to take the approach of using that for departments that are new or have a change in director, or they're going to be merging, so that, so that some of those team dynamics, they could set a good foundation and a good behavioral pattern as they move forward. So we, we've had pretty good success with, with one department in particular so far, so we're going to expand that. And then we're going to do that survey again, so we can see where people are at now and gauge what other further movements we, we need to make as we go forward. Well, should be happening here next month. Next slide. And then, so communication engagement is a part of that. We've had, we did update the website. I know some bugs are still being worked out, but the intention is to improve ease of use and, and services from the community. We do have online interactions that we have been updating in our systems, digital plan submissions. As, as you know, we work through that pending parcel number situation with the assessor's office. And then, as you saw, the awards that the treasurer's office had received on their technology and payment interfaces. We've done a lot of, of progress in social media. I think I have a stat in the next slide. And then the videographer for the storytelling, which we've all enjoyed and loved, a lot of Kevin's good work. And then things like being able to geo-district your news distribution so that you can target relevant news to, to relevant audiences geographically. And then, and, and you've been all a part of this, so it's just kind of reminders and updates. But as a part of the employee investments, you have given us a lot more flexibility when it comes to salaries. And, and of course, we, we were developing over many years with an old salary structure that was very strict with 14 steps and higher up to a step three kind of situation. So now there's a lot more flexibility and a lot more management, I think, needs that are able to be met for departments as they go through to both be able to recruit and retain and then keep the internal equity within the department's whole. And also to be able to, to compare to our true labor competition instead of just an average of what we kind of view as similar around. But so that's helped us a lot. We're still, it's step by step, because we've got a lot of employees and a lot of job classifications in a lot of departments. But wherever we are able to do that as we go, the effects have been very positive from those departments as far as morale and, and retaining and recruitment. Yep.
I see communication, engagement, investments, and so on, management excellence. But what are you, as the county manager, planning on doing to inspire excellence or inspire these things through leadership? What's your leadership picture look like?
Well, I think I talked about it in the last slide, but I think there's elements both of the feedback that we get from the employees of what they're experiencing, and so what kind of things do we need to make movement in? Like we have with communication and engagement and leadership training. But also, and, and we did this from the beginning, we, we knew it started at the top. And so, we had a debate whether or not should we do it from kind of bottom ground up or do it from the top? And we knew that if we didn't start at the top, that the employees would look at us like hypocrites. And they'd say, oh, okay, so we're doing all this leadership training, and we're doing all of these things. What are you guys doing up here? And why are we doing all this when you're acting like this? And also, when you're in, in an organization this large, how are you going to be able to get it kind of down to everybody? So that culturally and the norms are, we treat people this way, you know, with respect and with trust and with support, and we work as a team. How do you get that to every single person, every single 2,000 people? How does that get into their kind of normal mode of soporant? How does that become a norm, a culture for them? And, and we knew, I can't touch every single employee, and I can't have that level of, there just wouldn't, there's no, I can't coach and mentor, you know, 2,000 employees. And so, we knew that we would have to, as we start at the top, we would have to learn that and get trained and live that. And that would have to then go from them to their subordinates under them, to their subordinates under them, to their subordinates under them. So we knew it was going to start at the top, go to middle management, go to the field supervisors and to the staff. And that each leader in their respective area was going to have to model that and was going to have to coach that and get their teams to do it. That was the only way that it could permeate the whole organization. And it's kind of aspirational, in a sense of, we know we'll never be perfect, but that would be the way. Because the reality is, I'm not on the ground. I'm not on the ground with the, anymore unfortunately. But I'm in different teams than I used to be. So I'm not like managing a small team on the ground where I'm going to just, it's going to be my team. It's going to be the ones that I work with. You guys, the deputy managers, the directors, the stakeholders, partners in other cities and towns. Those are the people that I'm directly affecting right now. And if my managers, through coaching and through following our example of the culture that we're setting and the values that we aspire to, are then living those out, and they're living them with their directors, and they're living them with their managers and their supervisors, that's how it's really going to get to, to all the employees. And so, and so we will, even organization is the leadership top area. You know, we look at where are the needs and how we can make adjustments in, in some of those positions as well.
So, can I interrupt? That was, that was a big explanation, but I think there was, and forgive me if I can't remember the general. It was Patton would, would go out and see his troops every once in a while, the, the buck private working the, working the line. Do you get a chance to do that every once in a while, have one-on-one? We talk about excellence and leadership. Do you ever meet with those people from time to time on a one-on-one basis? Is that possible?
Not as much further down the line, you know, as, as I'd like in a sense. But, but it is possible, and we've talked about it. I mean, we've had things like, like lunch with the county manager. I think we, you know, we started that, we did it in the past a few times. I think there's opportunities to do that. Time-wise, probably not as much as I would like to. But I think it's something could be done.
20 minutes ago, Supervisor Miller, City of Henderson annexed that land, and they own most of it. So that's actually in the city limits.
Is that right?
3,000 acres of solar. So.
Do they? So they, they.
Do they get revenue off of that?
Yeah, they are, yeah. But that's Nevada, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
That's a big leak.
It's so massive, it's just unbelievable.
But back to that point and back to solar, just since it got brought up, the aesthetics is, is a concern and an issue that, that has been expressed from the cities and towns, and obviously some of our public too. So back to employee investments, salaries, but also, as we changed to that self-funded benefits trust, we were in the pool before, we changed to ours. And we've been trying to communicate just what the total compensation package is from a competitive standpoint. EREs, what benefits, time that you get off and all of those things. So we did make a concerted effort to do that, and I think that's helped some, and I think it opened up the eyes of even some of the employees. And then, as I mentioned before, just ways that we organize the teams for synergies. We've, a few examples of some of those that we've done there over the last year or two, or in process of now. Next slide, please. Oh, these are just the stats for social media progress that was mentioned before, just engagement levels, just significance of followers, of views, and people connecting for news and engagement through social media.
That's been over the last three years.
So that was the last two years, yeah, since we created and staffed that communications and marketing department.
Yeah. That's a lot. Impressive numbers. Yeah, that is. Well done.
Next slide. And so, this is the, our last, our fifth of our five priorities. Enhancing, well, I guess before we go on, any, any other, any other comments on that section or guidance? So enhance economic vitality. And we did use vitality, traditionally the industry uses economic development. We did use vitality because we did want to show that we do look at this, for lack of a better word, somewhat holistically, that we're not just all industry for the sake of all industry, and that there are certain areas that we do like to target, and there are certain areas that we want to make progress in. So we aim to attract and develop a skilled and talented workforce. We collaborate with the state, cities, towns, regional organizations, and the private sector to strengthen our economy. We don't talk about this one much, I put it first. But tourism is something that we have our eye on, that we're doing a joint study with the Arizona Office of Tourism to maximize this in our county. Obviously, not just us, but everybody has, had reduced tourism revenues and activity during the pandemic. And so, we, we have a goal here just to bump it back up. In reality, we, we have started marketing more, we're marketing our venture corridor and explore Penale County at places like the Mesa Gateway Airport, where people are close by and they're landing in. And we're doing things like Supervisor Sertie has been doing for the last year and a half, coordinating with all the public land managers, you know, looking into potentially if the superstition should be, could be, would it be a good thing? Could we make it a national monument or not? We've been really increasing our sponsorship to local events. Some of them that, you know, people from all over the state come by, the, the oldest rodeo here in Florence, the Junior Prado Rodeo that we just had. So we're really trying to make an effort to get people out here and get people having a good time in the county. So I don't know if there's any questions on that, or James probably has more info if you wanted more detail.
No, I, you know, to your point with Supervisor Sertie.
No, I, you know, to your point with Supervisor Sertie, I felt like that, I think our county as a whole is, we haven't used the Superstition Mountains as effectively as City of Mesa or anybody else. They've used our mountain to help promote their cities and using that. For the longest time I thought Superstition Mountain was in the City of Mesa. And so, and I grew up in East Mesa, so I, no, I, I remember when you were the city, the mayor there and sitting in your chambers and that picturesque view right there in the chambers, the council chambers and looking out at the majestic Superstition Mountains was glorious. And so I think this right here, this, what you're doing here is pretty good. But back to, I'd like to go back for a second to Supervisor Kavanaugh's, what he was asking you in regards to that. And I'd like to ask Supervisor Kavanaugh, are you suggesting, I mean, have you heard some things to where he needs to get out there more? To our employees or is it just something that?
There have been criticisms and I'll not share them in this venue. But, but I think we have management and leadership and those are two different things. So we need, we have a management team and we have to make sure that our management team is also leading. And Matt Hedrick at the sheriff's office comes to mind. I was just thinking about, you know, if we're, if we're to develop leadership, maybe have, rather, you know, we have consultants, but what about people who are already doing it well within the county and setting example and teaching, you know, good leadership skills?
And you're saying Matt because he does a pretty good job of that?
Right, yeah.
I would agree with you. And I think that was more of a suggestion to Leo is to doing stuff like that. And I don't, and I don't know what you're doing now, but I think, and I think this work session is one to kind of, as a strategic to help us move forward in what we're trying to do. There's a lot of other things that you've done extremely well that's really helped us move along in a lot of our areas. And I guess that's what you're, what you were trying to say was, you know, can you, you would like to see a little bit more expansion from him.
Yeah, and the leadership focus, you know, you can, you can keep an employee just so long with decent pay, but when they're, when they're really connected to a leadership team, it becomes more of, even more of a family. We have a great start, but I think we should consider sort of a leadership group and so that those, those skills are transmitted to others. And I just don't like the idea of another consultant coming in and doing it. I think we have enough skill set and we have enough good people here that this is something we could do even organically and really promote the leadership within the county.
Okay. I just, I was just trying to figure out where were you, where were you going with that? And sometimes in our discussions, it would be helpful is if we would actually get the message out, this is where we're going with this, this is why we're going with this. And so, and this is a work session to help us with our strategic plan.
Right.
And that's why I wanted to go back to that because I wanted to see, I want to make sure that we're very clear on our message to our staff moving forward. And sometimes we don't do that, we kind of talk in riddles. And I think it's important that we talk openly about these things and express moving forward. I do agree with you. I do think that we do use consultants quite a bit more than we should because I think we have the skill sets right here within our own departments to be able to move some things forward to make that happen. Your example of Matt Hedricks and what Matt does over there is amazing to me. So that's a good point.
Yes, we have, so we focus a lot on management, but maybe we should up our game on leadership.
Which is more of the human, human side.
And globally, that would, that would impact productivity, you know, keeping employees, the whole bit.
And I don't think he's suggesting that you become Patton where you go to the hospital and you beat the kid up.
I was, I didn't want to use Patton because I wasn't sharing, I did remember that story. But if someone needs hit, I don't know.
Sometimes we need to beat that beaten up, I don't know.
Thank you for the clarification. Yes, and that was, we do have consultants that help to facilitate, but to your point, that is the, you know, developing it and doing it from within, like I said, and really us modeling and coaching is the only way that we're going to be able to permeate it really throughout the entire county.
Cool.
So tourism, I think that, unless, is there any comments on that or?
No, I think, I think we're doing good on that one.
Okay, next slide. So enhancing economic vitality continued. This is probably, you know, one of the areas that we try to focus on the most. And we call them, if we want to call them base industry jobs, but especially because those are the jobs that are going to have the multiplier effect of three to five additional jobs based on the activities that they do. So we like to start there. We had, and you've seen it, I think it's on a slide after this, but it shows what the commuting out labor migration jobs are. 78% of the county is working in the neighboring counties. And, and so we want to increase those base jobs, not only for the sake of those jobs themselves, but also for the ones that they induce to really put a dent into that labor migration number and turn that around. In this one, we just kind of put approximately 2% a year. And like as we talked about earlier, you land these companies, but it takes a while for them to actually build out and to get those jobs in place. So right now we're experiencing some of the benefits of the years past and some of the work we're doing now, we won't see the benefits for, you know, years on into the future. So this is, these two kind of go together, increase the base number, industry base number of jobs and then also which will then help with the migration as well on labor. And then at the end, I did put one of those examples of that. Now granted, that may be somewhat of also residential, residential, how many, but it was a long 10-year process or more than 10-year process actually for them to finally land and do their grand opening.
Could we see a demonstration of that trademark at the very end?
I hope we, I do-
We had to do it at the ribbon cutting, so I'm just, I'd just like to see, you know, just show the demonstration.
Yeah.
Can we see one of those?
Bam, baby!
There you go, okay.
Well, you saw it live and you'll probably see a picture of it too. But yeah, it was a long time coming and, you know, and you and Supervisors McClure and Goodman were both there and they were very complimentary of the county and of the permitting process and the flexibility. They've worked, obviously this is Home Depot, they worked in probably every jurisdiction across the country. And they said we were very good to work with and very flexible to work with.
This is the first Home Depot that they've built in 16 years, by the way.
Yeah.
Wow.
And they only had, I think, I think they have 16 of them that they're going to build, but this was the first of that set.
So since the last boom?
Yes.
Yeah, wow.
Bam, bam.
Yeah. There were, and I remember the meeting we had with them up a long, long time ago in Goodman's conference room. But that's what they were looking for, flexibility on certain things, especially with the way businesses changed, the parking lots, the pads, the online buying and pickup and all of that. And so about, I think it was about 190 jobs plus or minus, but I think I also heard them say that 95% or so of them live in Santan Valley.
95% of the workforce there at Home Depot actually live in the Pinal County Santan Valley area.
Yeah. So there'll be more to come on that, I think we'll probably have a video next week. Any questions, comments on this slide? Okay, thank you, next slide. So this does show a nice graphic of the migration that we're trying to change. Shows almost 120,000 leaving the county, only 33,000 both live and work in the county. And then there's a smaller portion, almost 30,000 that comes into the county, but lives in other counties. Next slide. So this is a lot of the headway that we've made recently. Of course, you've all been a part, we just did the training center agreement on LG, but significant investment in jobs. And these are just direct employees in that line. So the multiplier effect of the three to five jobs induced from all of these, that number does not represent that. These are just direct hires. And then the Lucid and the Lucid expansion to land them, keep them landed here, to expand their campus was a great effort. And then down the line, as you know, we've, like again, said, we worked with these, whether it's roads or workforce development, which are really their two major needs that we meet as a county entity. And then just a variety of suppliers, whether it's building products, home or semiconductor manufacturing. And, and of course, a lot that aren't on this list that hopefully next year you'll see a similar list with different names on it that we're working on. Next slide. So this is just a picture to commemorate that moment. And I think one of the, a couple of things to mention about this is, this is the largest, and we asked them, of course, we don't, we don't know for sure, but industrial land sale from Arizona State Land in the county. And so we're talking 600 acres. This was LG Energy Solutions and really these people were all a part of it. You mentioned earlier, GPEC, GPEC was involved in this from the beginning, worked with state land, the Commerce Authority, the company, Queen Creek, Central Arizona College for that training center. And unfortunately, not everybody was able to be in this picture, but we do have some attorneys represented there. We have town members. Chris wasn't there, unfortunately, we tried to run, it was a long day. We recorded documents right before lunch, which took a few hours. So by the time we got out here, it was, it was a long time. But all the representatives were there and I think how much work it really does take to get to that point and then to implement it after, it's incredible how much work it really takes. I don't know that people know the level of stress and hours that go into being able to get something like this across the finish line. And then next slide. That was just to commemorate the Lucid expansion. We went over to their headquarters for rating agencies meetings and Chris did get to make it in that one thankfully. And so we just had a picture to commemorate that. Of course, it takes a lot of teamwork and on the title there, but there was economic impact analyses that were done. And so that was a 20-year impact. The one before, the slide before had like a 1.2 billion a year impact, which was basically once they're up and running, didn't even include the economic impact of construction. And next slide, oh, there we are. There's the second bam you get. So that was at the production kickoff where Lucid allowed us to test drive their vehicles that go zero to 60 in two seconds. And there's our supervisor, Mr. Ledfoot, full speed ahead. So I thought I'd end it with that. If there's any other questions or comments or guidance you'd like to give us, we'd appreciate it. Otherwise, that's, that's our last slide. Anything else on economic development or the plan or priorities as a whole? All right. Thank you. We appreciate again your leadership and staff's hard work and leadership and all they've done to really make all of this good progress.
Thanks for your presentation.
Is that it? Do we have to go home now? Okay. All right.